Camden Select Board Meeting for the first meeting in 2020, January 7th. As per usually our agenda, we will start off with anybody who has any public input on a non-agenda item. Is there anybody here wants to speak to a non-agenda item? Recognizing Nina.
Just turn on the microphone there. It needs to be.
Thanks, Dave.
Hi, I'm Nina Holland, a resident of Camden. And my first question is about communication because I've been, I watched the town Camden webpage and I understand it's still being upgraded and changed. But I've been hearing that for a while and I wondered if there was any timeframe that it would be completed or worked on more or, so that's question number one, which is about communication. And because I live across the street from the Tannery Park, I have a particular interest in that and I watch for the park and recreation minutes, which were posted through October, probably because I pester them, but I, the minutes from March and since October, when I looked two days ago, were still not posted. And I don't know what's going on with the EPA report. I can't find it in the newspapers and I bother Jeremy from time to time. And so I just wish there was better, more clear communication. And another point about communication is that I love it that we have a newspaper in this town that's commercial and really speaks to a lot of people's interests. But it's, for some of us, it's a bit expensive. And if you pay it week by week, it's almost $100. So I would encourage more press coverage of what's going on, but also the free press be included, aside from letters to the editor, because I just find getting information that I want very difficult. So thank you for listening.
Thank you, Nina, very much for bringing that attention. We'll pay attention to it, trust me. We try to communicate better and we don't always succeed, but we sure want to try. Thanks for coming so much. Thanks for coming.
Pardon?
Thanks for coming.
Oh, you're welcome.
Website, we're looking at three weeks.
Yeah, go ahead.
Three weeks.
On the website?
Yes. So we're, we're just putting content, content into the new, the new website right now. So hopefully within three weeks, we'll be ready to go.
Wow.
And thank you for the very thoughtful comments on the website. That, that kind of stuff is really useful when, you know, the really detailed comments that you provided before on what could be better. And we'll probably need more of that at some point. But the goal has been to not just launch the website without, you know, it being, it has taken a while, but it's just a really time consuming process. We had a workshop about it, but yeah, it's just gonna, anyway. But also, I think your, the comments about the communication are really good also because it's something that we have been talking about, or we sort of talk amongst ourselves about. One thing that keeps getting delayed is we have this select board policy document that gets approved at the beginning of each select board season, fiscal, is it fiscal year, I suppose, too?
Mm-hmm.
That goes over the basic things like where, you know, which days we're gonna meet and what we're gonna use to tell people about meeting, regular meetings versus non-regular meetings. And we realized this year that we kind of just approved that a little bit too quickly, maybe, and that we actually do need to really revisit, like, okay, well, why are we choosing these certain newspapers versus these newspapers? And which part of our budget is going towards that? And which newspaper is really the most accessible for people? And so, yes, thank you for, if you want to provide any more extensive comments, you can feel free to do that in writing and take those into consideration.
But you're always welcome to come to the meeting. Anybody else in the public who wants to address a non-agenda item? Not seeing any hands, we'll go to select board reports. Taylor, anything on your side?
Nothing tonight.
The only small comment that I would make is that I have heard repeatedly from people a concern about our ability to enforce the polystyrene ordinance. And that, I share the concern and I just want to make sure, I know that that's been a topic of conversation a little bit on the town staff side of things, but I would just want, a lot of people have come to me with concerns. And each time I say, I know, I'm concerned too. And so,
but actions should be.
Actions hopefully will be.
I totally agree with that. I agree. Anything else?
Nope.
Mr. Ratner?
Let's see, first, I apologize for walking in late.
You're not forgiven.
I arrived home from New York City about 15 minutes ago. So it was a quick turnaround. Amtrak had an engine failure on our train, which was, was interesting. Since the last meeting, we've had an energy meeting, I believe, and there are a lot of energy people here. That discussion will come up later. Don't need to get into that. Camden Opera House Board had a, had a committee, had a meeting. A really good year for the Opera House right now. There is construction going on in the third floor. We will have a new all-access bathroom on the third floor, which will help for the, bringing people in for, to use the third floor, especially for CIF, for Camden Conference, for, for the shows that go up there. And it's, it's a big improvement and it'll help the Opera House. One of the many developments going on. And the shows, we're gonna have a big meeting at the end of this month about all the kinds of shows we want to bring in for 2020. Looking forward to that. So there'll be lots to report about that. And I'll leave it for that for now.
Thanks. Good. All right. With that, some of the things I want to discuss, we'll be discussing later in the agenda. So skipping past select board reports, we will talk to the approval of the board minutes from December 17th, 2019. Do we have any comments, corrections, approvals, motions?
I think, hopefully this isn't in one of the mistaken minutes that I read from 2019, but I noticed, oh yeah, it is this one, that Chris Fassold's name needs to be.
It's spelled wrong?
Yeah, it's F-A-S, I think only one S, O-L-D-T?
That's correct.
Or just a T?
I think it's, hmm?
Or is it D?
There's a D in there.
Yeah.
It's Fassold with a D.
Did it?
Which is item five on the, on the, on the minutes. Anything else?
I haven't had a chance to see.
Oh, okay, Mark.
Sorry.
And part of me was like, well, I think I liked it when she wrote just a tiny bit more. Maybe we told her to scale it back too much.
We did.
We did.
I know. And it's, it's exactly, but I can't think of any, I'm gonna try harder if there are things, specific things I want in there. It's a fine line because I like all of your commentary. Now I was like, maybe we're wasting her time. Being here was good that she write more. But anyway, it's, you're doing a great job doing exactly what we asked. So thank you.
So with that one correction, do I have a motion for acceptance?
I'll make a motion. We accept the minutes.
With that one correction. Okay. Allos in favor?
I wasn't here.
301 because Taylor wasn't here. Good catch, Taylor. On to consent agenda. There are three items on the consent agenda. They are the consideration of a request from the Camden Library to close Atlantic Avenue on Saturday, February 1st, 2020, from 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. for Winterfest activities. And we're gonna sing it.
Sorry about that.
That's quite right. I like the music, actually. Kind of woke me up. Item two on the consent agenda is the approval or a Vittler license for Camden Bagel LLC, doing business as the Big T Snack Shack at Camden Snowball. Basically, it's the kitchen for the snowball license. And the approval of the Vittler license for the Camden Bagel LLC, doing business as the Big T Shack at Camden Snowball, which is basically for the outside trailer. Do I have any objections to the three items on the consent agenda?
No.
Not hearing any. They're hereby accepted. The fifth item on the agenda would be a discussion we're going to have on the winter road maintenance and winter parking ban. And I presume that will be by our Public Works gang that's here. Please.
Are you ready now?
Okay, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Good evening, everybody. Town manager had expressed, there was some interest in possibly how we handle snow and ice control in the town of Camden. Some of the things that we're currently doing, some of the things we're doing to minimize the use of sand and salt, some of the effects of sand and salt, and what we plan to do in the future to kind of make things a little better. So I'll start off here. My name's Dave St. Laurent, by the way, and this is Rick's.
I'm Rick's side note.
So this is, this presentation is basically the, the baseline data for sand and salt used over the past 16 years, and some of the different pros and cons of sand and salt, some of the effects of sand and salt, and some of the improving methodologies of using sand and salt for ice and snow control. Camden's our coastal town with approximately 5,000 residents. We have environmentally sensitive areas because of the McGonagall watershed. We have 58 centerline miles and 12 miles of sidewalk. 38 of those are town roads, 20 are state roads. Snow and ice control level of service is defined as a set of operational guidelines and procedures that specifies the extent of, to how we maintain the road. Our level of service is defined in our snow and ice control plan, and that's posted online. It gives the details on how we handle storms, what routes we, we maintain and how we do that. Currently, we, the downtown is the only salt priority area that's treated, meaning we use mainly just salt in the downtown. The outskirts of the downtown, we'll use a mixture of sand and salt. These, this is the relevant, relevant main law that dictates how we maintain our roads. That's, so state law says that we need to maintain our roads so they're safe and convenient, they're not blocked or encumbered. And we are immune from any liability of accidents caused by, resulting from snow and ice. On state roads, we're mandated to maintain those roads to the satisfaction of the MDOT. If they find that our roads aren't maintained satisfactorily, they can have the roads maintained and then bill us for it. That's what the state statute says.
What about the sidewalks? What about the sidewalks?
Sidewalks are also included in that. Says we have to maintain them and they need to be safe and navigable.
And then the ones, I had heard at one point that the business owners are responsible for the sidewalk right in front of their business. Is that true?
Not in Camden.
No.
Okay.
No, we maintain sidewalks. No, it's normal.
Oh, interesting. Okay.
So this first slide right, well, this slide right here is salt baseline data from 2004 to 2019. And it's kind of interesting if you look at it. If you look at the very last, the very last row, it breaks down, the, this is per event. So every event in 2004 or '05, we were putting down .27 yards of salt per lane mile. Cubic yards.
An average?
That's, that's an average per event. Cubic yards. Cubic yards. And that's a lane mile, not a centerline mile. The difference would be, it would be doubled for a centerline, a lane mile is each, each side of the road. So as you can see, we're kind of around the 20, 20 range. I mean, our average, 16-year average is .20. Currently, we're at a .15. It's fluctuated. Our average use per year is 785 yards. Calibration is one of the most important things you do to regulate the sand and salt usage. Pre-wetting can result as much as a 30% reduction. Employing training is critical. And close monitoring of storm temperatures, snowfall are also very important on combating storms. This is kind of a graph, just kind of showing that. This is the same information, but just in a sand format. So this is baseline data from the same time, but it's for sand. So it's showing the same information, but at a .52 yards per lane mile. And our average is .45. And we're at a .36 right now. The town uses roughly 1,500 cubic yards of sand per year over the past 15 years. Sand is generally used sparingly and it really is mainly used for roads and intersections because of the abrasiveness.
Dave, can you speak to the difference between salt and sand? I don't know that a lot of people understand. Why use one, why use the other? What's the difference?
Maybe the next, there's a slide in here that kind of, kind of talks a little bit about that. So here's the, same data in sand, graphed out. And this is an interesting one. I mean, for sand and salt guys like Rick and I, but this, this shows the sand and salt usage, the same two, four slides you saw before, but compared next to each other per year. So it kind of shows how the ratio of sand and salt is used. And so you can see, we use much more sand than salt. And there's a reason for that.
Hmm.
So I'll go over some of the, the impacts of snow and ice control activities. So there's an economic impact for infrastructure and equipment associated with the salt storage, material costs, accidents, commerce and remediation, the social and public impacts associated with crashes, groundwater and drinking water contamination, and mobility on roadways. Environmental impacts are road salt into streams, wetlands, lakes and water, soil, aquatic and semi-aquatic life, roadside vegetation, and urban trees and plants. And there's also critical impacts of streams, sand in streams and water bodies and the air. So you don't think about sand having an impact in the air, but it does. So this is kind of what Mark was, was talking a little bit about. These are the pros and cons to sand. Sand, I'll start with the first one over here. Sand, it works really well below zero degrees. It creates good friction. So there's an abrasiveness to it. It kind of gives you some traction when you're, when you're driving on a slippery surface. It costs much less. Sand, sand can damage waterways, though, by clogging the spaces where the insects live in the streams. So people think that salt's the only thing that's bad for streams. Sand's also bad for streams when used in excess. It clogs the ditches and the pipes and it has kind of a legacy cost of using it. You, you have to remove it, and I'll get into that a little bit more. Think about when you put sand on the road, it doesn't just go away. Someone has to pick that up. It gets into the drainage ditches. It gets into the equipment. It gets into the air. So it piles up on the shoulders. It makes it harder for the water to get off the shoulder. So the water will lay on the road and make the road degrade more quickly. Contributes to wear on treatment plant pumps if it's in a combined system. Creates dust, introduces silt and contaminants into the waters. So benefit of sand in terms of driving, it gives us traction. Salt, on the other hand, is, it, it reduces the melt, the freezing point of ice. So it'll do that well down to 15 degrees, but after that point, sand needs to take over. You need to use an additive to bring down the temperature a little bit more to zero or minus 15, like magnesium. When, when the roads are clear and personnel are able to restore the base, the bare pavement conditions faster, when you use salt, because the snow's not bonded to the surface at that point. Once the snow is bonded to the surface, it's hard to break that bond. And it, and then it's much more difficult to keep the road clear. And you have to work twice as hard to do that. There's fewer accidents and fewer travel conditions during and after the storm when you use salt. There's fewer call-ins from Public Works crews before and after the storm. You have improved mobility with a faster return of bare pavement. You have reduced spring cleanup. Salt dissolves while sand accumulates in the road ditches and the drainage structures requires follow-up. Salt migrates into lakes and streams. It can cause harm to aquatic plants and animals. Chlorides can have a negative impact on the infrastructure, vehicles, equipment, bridges, any kind of metal and concrete. It degrades that material. And you have groundwater contamination from chloride sequestering. Chloride sequestering is where salt will accumulate in the, in the subgrade. And it, and once the, the salt has kind of melted off and goes into the streams and everything, the residuals will collect in the subgrade and build up over time. You don't realize that's happening, but when you use excessive salts, that sequestering over a long periods of time can have a negative impact on aquifers, wells. So, you know, there's a real concern with overuse of salt. And you have to be conscious of that when you're using it. So the way, the way you control those things is through administrative, best management practices. And that's by monitoring the weather, knowing what weather's coming, so you can predict it. Every storm's different. And Rick and I will get together when we look at a storm coming in and we'll, we'll come up with a strategy on how we're gonna deal with that storm. We have pre and post-storm meetings. We talk about it with the crew. We talk about when the snow's coming, what we're expecting, you know, how we're gonna deal with it. Early treatment really, really reduces the amount of salt and sand that we use. Like I said earlier, if we get out really early, we get ahead of the storm, we can keep up with it. If we get behind and the salt, the snow bonds to the surface of the road, it's really difficult to maintain. Takes twice as long to clean up after it. So that's really a critical piece. We rely on the police department. The police department's always out there all day long and all night. And as soon as they see this, the road condition's getting bad, they let us know about it and we get our people on it right off. There's a saying, two inches is too late. Once there's two inches on the road surface and we haven't treated it, it's twice as hard to maintain and get back to normal. We need, we really, we provide training, the employees, through main local roads. That's very important. So people are on the cutting edge of the new technologies and the ways to combat snow and ice control. And choosing the right treatment and the right products for the storm, that's another one. We mainly use sand and salt and magnesium chloride, but there's also salt brine, liquid brine and pre-treated, pre-treated salt. We'll talk a little bit about that in the next few slides. Okay, so this is kind of what one of our, one of our efforts and along with best management practices, the administrative best management practices, some of the things that Rick and I are talking about doing for this next year. Two of our seven plow routes are the more salt sensitive areas due to lake, rivers and streams of the watershed. So we want to outfit those two vehicles, which was, one is a CIP for a plow truck that does one of the outer routes, and a current plow truck that we have that does the other outer route around the watershed, and put pre-wet systems on those. The pre-wet system will help us reduce the amount of salt we use by up to 30%, they say. But any improvement will be better than where we're currently at.
What about sand?
Sand, pre-wetting on sand also works in the same way. You can, it helps the sand stick to the surface instead of blowing off when it's dry. So if you pre-wet the sand, it'll stick on the surface. You're driving across the surface and you have that traction right there. Otherwise, a car can drive over the dry sand and blow it off. And then the next car going by after it doesn't have as much there. So they say it also will reduce up to 30% of usage.
So you're not putting out as much sand, you're using a lot less sand.
Yep.
And calibrating our spreaders, which done, is done annually. As we replace our equipment, replacing our older trucks and tailgate spreaders with side dump bodies that could have more precise calibration, and we'll distribute the material in a more precise area ahead of the rear wheels, which makes it more, a better placement. And then we're gonna look at investigating some brining, brining equipment to doing some other, and doing some other pre-wetting mixtures. So the brine, it's all about having different tools in your toolbox when you're trying to take care of snow and ice. And one of the things that we can do is, is do some brining of the roads. And that will work. Everybody hears about brine or, or pre-treatment, but pre-treatment has its place. You have to have really, really low humidity. You have to be ahead of the storm by, you know, a couple hours at the best. It has, you have to put the brine down. And basically, it's a saltwater solution or a mixture of other ingredients. And you spray the road surface when it's dry, and the water will evaporate, leaving the residue behind. And then what happens is when it snows, that prevents the snow from bonding to the surface of the road and gives you that much more time to, to combat it. And keeps the road open longer, too. But it's limited. It has to be low humidity, the right temperature, but it's a tool and we can use it, you know, maybe 10 times out of the year. But it's something we're gonna look into getting together and, and doing. So this is, this is a document that's actually put out by the group that's at the bottom. It was a conglomeration of main local roads, main DOT, main DEP, and the main turnpike authority, and, and the E, and the DEP, I think. And it was a roundtable meeting in 2015. And it goes over all these best management practices and, and more detail. And this is one of the documents that we use to minimize sand and salt use and maximize its efficiency. So that's kind of it for the sand and salt part of it. I know we were gonna talk about another component to this, but does anybody have any questions? I know maybe beet juice might be one of them, but...
Just in general, a lot of data, great data, but I'm great. Do you have any idea of how Camden compares metrically to other communities along the coast in terms of the sand salt?
Well, it's funny because there's a, there's a gentleman, I'm not gonna say his name, but I'm not gonna say the town, but, well, you won't. I don't think he'll know which one it is. But we don't know. And he's no longer with us, unfortunately. He's passed away now. And he actually gave me the start of this, this PowerPoint. There isn't really anything left of his on there other than the data fields where he, where he put together the 16 years worth of data. But when Rick and I were putting this data together, I was comparing his data against our data, and we were really, really close. And he was on the cutting edge. So to answer your question, I think we do well. I think we can improve, though. It's all about continuous improvement. So we're gonna try and continually improve. Nice thing to hear. Mark?
My question would be, where are you in the budget process for getting the equipment that would give us the best usage?
Well, the CIP's been submitted, and that has the truck in it. And that's been a truck that we were, I think, planning on purchasing.
What does CIP stand for?
Investment Improvement Plan. And I think that, that truck was scheduled to be purchased for several years now. And I think we're at that point where we need that truck. And we will outfit that truck with a pre-wet system. And then I'm gonna include in the operational budget, another part for the pre-wet system for the truck we currently have. And that will be used on the more sensitive routes that I discussed in the, in the watershed area.
So hopefully by next year?
Yes.
Is, is when you're looking for these improvements?
Correct.
And that's something we want to look for in the budget then. Great. Okay.
And then as we phase out each other truck, we'll try and put the better Sanders on them and the better, and the wetting systems. Right. Taylor, Allison, have any questions?
Yeah. So one of, one of the things I hear most from people, and one of the main things that I believed strongly when I first got involved in town government and the Budget Committee and all that, is that Camden just goes way overboard in terms of salting the roads too much. You see, you know, sometimes we would joke about there being just a dusting of snow on the road. And you see a Camden plow truck come by and you think, geez, what is, this is why it's costing us so much money, because there, we are catering to people who don't know how to drive in the snow. And really, it should be like it was when I grew up, where there was, you know, it would be fine if there was snow on the road all year long and we would just learn how to drive better. And our cars wouldn't get so damaged by the salt. And through this sort of questioning process, Rick has, I mean, very quickly actually turned me around on that and sort of realizing that, and tell me if this is wrong, that you actually, by, by addressing it very quickly and salting the roads right at the beginning, even when there's barely anything, we're reducing drastically the total amount
Significant.
Of sand and salt that we have to use.
That's one of the best management practices. Yep. Is to attack it early.
Okay.
And I think like I've told you before, I have history here for a long time. And before I even took over, we were using 3,500 yards of sand a year. Now we're down to 1,500. And we're using 600 tons of salt. We're now, was the average 700 and something?
Yeah, 750.
Something like that. So.
Great.
Just by doing what we're doing. And I used to have a pre-wetting system.
785.
Okay, so.
And what was, this, one of the things that And what was, one of the things that you mentioned to me was the impact of accidents, that just how much more frequent the accidents are when we do less, and the perspective that each accident is also an environmental problem that sometimes we forget, so.
When we do less, if we don't salt, and we have more of a sand priority than we do salt priority, we end up with snowpack on the road, which is what we were talking about. We have snowpack on the road, you have to go back continuously to sand it. And it can get very rough if you have a warming session of it, it'll be like a road full of potholes. It'll be all broken up, and some spots will have ice and other spots we bare, so it's continuous sanding of the road. If the temperature drops, I've had times, years ago, where we'd go out on a snowpack road, put sand down Saturday morning, Saturday night, Sunday morning, Sunday night, Monday morning, and you put it down and it just keeps blowing off. There was no pre-wetting, there was no salt, or very little salt added to it. It just didn't work, so. And the accidents when the road is like that, people are, you get a lot more complaints. Town office gets loaded with them, you would. It's just because people have to get through. We have, going through town here, throughout the night and throughout the day, a lot of fuel trucks. Not just heating fuel, but you have, you used to have jet fuel trucks. I don't know if they're still going through in the middle of the night anymore or not. But if these roads are not kept bare or in good drivable condition, Cappy's down here, not Cappy's, Sea Dog is where they end up. And I've had, I don't know, three or four cars I can remember over the last few years that have slid through there, taken out two streetlights over the past years. It's a bad spot, and you can have a lot more of a detrimental effect. This is the highest priority I have on all the roads is Route 1 going through town.
Sure.
And it's for that reason. It's a major route going through town.
Makes sense.
And a lot of traffic.
Makes sense.
You are, right, to have a minimum level of navigability?
Yes, but we just, the way the contours of the town, the hills, I mean, we always have trucks stuck even during a storm.
Sure.
Because you can't keep it 100% all throughout a storm.
So we do Route 1 all through Camden, that's all else, not the state?
We do it from John Street to Marine Avenue.
Marine Avenue, yeah.
Rockport does from John Street into Rockport, yeah?
Well, the state does Route 1 and Route 90.
And the state does the Park North, well, actually, it's before that, isn't it?
They do from Marine Avenue.
Before that, Marine Avenue North, yeah.
That's where they turn around, Marine Avenue.
How do they define where the boundary is for what we have to do versus what they do?
Well, that's, we just, I don't know, over the years, it's, they just figured out where they can turn around the best at and where we can turn around at easiest and...
That's why the turnaround sign on Route 1 near Marine Ave.
Yes.
It seems like a lot more people are able, from, at least from what I remember growing up, a lot more people are able to ride bikes during the winter. I know not everybody necessarily condones that, but it is nice to have, if you're, if we're committed to having the roads bare all the time, it does increase the ability, I would imagine, for people to be able to ride.
Yeah, if the roads are bare, and like I said, they're not, you're spending a lot more money and a lot more time out there.
Yeah, yeah.
And public safety vehicles, ambulances, fire trucks, police.
Yep.
They're gonna drive on these same roads, they need to have clear roads, good passable roads. Fire trucks can be slowed down, but how much? I mean, if you lose seconds on a, you know, fire call.
Sure, not good, not good. Taylor, did you have any questions, comments?
Those are the ones I asked.
Great job, great presentation. Thank you very much. Onto item two, yes. Item two, which was the declarification discussion of the parking ban.
Okay, so it was more of, we're here really to talk about people's concerns with parking ban. We can, we can kind of go through a few slides why we really can justify them, I think.
Go ahead, go ahead.
So that may be one of the first ones that we've, we kind of were thinking about. Without a parking ban, it's really difficult to maintain the sidewalks and the road. And then, once we do maintain the road and sidewalk and the car is there, once the car is out, we have to go back, and we never can really get it as clean as it wants, as the rest of it is. And then the sidewalk is usually all bumpy and icy and...
This is downtown Camden, too.
Yes. It's not my car. So, you know, that's, that's, and, oh, geez, that's the crew right there. Sorry.
Yep.
We'll go back to that. But is there a car under that? Is that the idea?
No.
I don't think so. I mean, if, I mean, we put the snow in these locations when we're cleaning up the downtown, and with the cars parked there, it makes it really difficult.
We have to haul snow piles off at times.
Sure, sure. Just to summarize the parking ban as it reads here, just so everybody's understanding, we have a parking ban from November 1st to April 1st from 1:00 AM to 5:00 AM. And that's the parking ban. However, there is...
On all streets?
All streets, all streets in Camden. Overnight parking is allowed in the Knock Mill Parking Area off Washington Street. And I believe, and Norton Street Lot also, I was gonna say there was another one. That summarizes it in a nutshell.
And that really helps us out when people park in those parking lots.
Sure.
Because then we can clean the roads like I think people want them to be cleaned as well as sidewalks.
Right, right.
Okay, so this is where perspectives probably differ. Why not do it like many other towns where, when there's an actual storm event, we would announce a parking ban? Instead of taking every single night from November to April, no matter what the weather, nobody can park on the street, which, in my mind, this kind of runs in direct defiance of some of the town goals, which are to use less amount of space for parking and more space for denser urban housing. A lot of the time, we hear that businesses aren't able to do things and we're not able to have, like, apartment buildings and things like that because of the, like, very stringent parking rules in Camden. So the more, the more we can make use of the streets, the more, you know, we're able to make good use of our downtown. So it just seems a little extreme to me that we would be ticketing people all winter long who are parking on the street when, during times when there's zero impact to the town.
I personally think it's about consistency. I think that if you send the message that sometimes you have a parking ban and sometimes you don't have a parking ban, the result is that more people will not be aware of when it's gonna snow and will be in the streets parked when it does snow. I think that if you had a really clear mechanism of letting people know that it was gonna be a storm and that they couldn't park, like a flashing light on the street somewhere that, you know, that said, oh, you know, parking ban, that might work. But realistically, we don't have that way of communicating that when it happens. And then there's a decision-making process at some point where you have to say, okay, is this a storm that's gonna affect the downtown, or is it not gonna be a storm? There needs to be all of those things that have to happen, and then we gotta send the message that, yeah, there's gonna be a parking ban now. And then, when is it too late to send the message?
There can be a heavy consequence for parking there. We do it with school closings all the time. People, as long as there's a heavy enough consequence for being there when you're not supposed to be there, people tend to learn.
But I mean, how many people really are parking to use the downtown at 1:00 AM to 5:00? You know what I mean?
Mark?
It's when they don't wanna drive. It's not driving home when, after they've been drinking, when they've been using, going any of the businesses. And it kind of forces people to drink and drive sometimes.
A couple of questions. One of the things that I found was interesting is, is two inches is too late. So I think people may have a problem understanding there's a problem before, you already know there's a problem, and they might not do that. But more importantly is, does anybody have a count on how many cars this ban influences? Do we know how many people are, have to move cars or are not able to park? Does anybody know what we're talking about?
I don't know that answer.
It can be different on any night you come down, because we have that because we clean up downtown. It's the only time that you can go down with wheel loaders and we can clean up the sidewalks and the parking areas. You could have, it depends on if there's events going on, like something, like a toboggan race or something, if there's gonna be more cars in town. It's just, it's different all the time.
Yeah, that's my question.
Apartment stuff.
I understand what Allison is talking about, and if there's a serious parking problem, and then maybe, maybe we put up a siren in the middle and wake everybody up at 3:00 AM. And for, but if it doesn't influence that many people, then maybe there's no need to change. And that's one of the things, and before you make a change, let's find out how many people it influences.
Well, while, I just wanna say, while we have this, right now, we have this parking ban. If we went down there tonight, if it snowed all day today and it just stopped snowing, we were gonna go down there tonight at midnight and start cleaning up, we may find anywhere from one to three or four cars down there. And that's, that's the most you usually see. Once in a while, if you don't enforce it, you can find five or six. Usually, the police department will go around, they'll get the registration, and they'll try to contact the home, the person that owns the vehicle by telephone. And if they can't, then remove the car.
That's where the parking ban.
That's where the parking ban.
Taylor?
Yeah, so I, I've gone back and forth about this one, and I kind of, I think I have a unique perspective in that I was a downtown resident until recently. So I lived in the apartment downtown and parked in the French and Brown Lot, or the Five and Nine Lot, or the loser lot, whatever you wanna call it. Inside baseball, I guess.
Can we do what Dickie calls it?
So the, I think with that, I remember several nights where, I guess, to back up, certainly it's frustrating when, I can understand the frustration when you get through all of November and December with no wintry precipitation in sight, and you forget to move your car at night, at midnight, and go out in the morning and there's a, usually it's a few warnings and then it's a ticket. Because then you start, you know, comparing apples to oranges, well, why are we having a winter parking ban? There isn't even a snowflake on the radar. So in that sense, you start to wonder if there's a more efficient way to enforce the parking ban or procedurally have it in effect. At the same time, when the snow does hit, I do see what happens in the middle of the night. All the snow that gets pushed, correct me if I'm wrong in describing this, but all the snow gets pushed downtown from a lot of the in-village streets, and it's piled in that lot overnight. But because the lot needs to be used during the day, you guys come out between midnight and 4:00 AM and push all the snow down to the lot and into the harbor, so it's clear by the time the business is open in the morning. So I understand that that lot is kind of crucial to keep clear, in particular.
That really difficult.
I get that.
Yeah.
So I think I, I sort of feel the same way Mark does in that, like, I'm not, it was super inconvenient for me at times, but you just gotta get used to like, all right, I gotta go move my car to the parking lot next to the fire station. It takes five minutes, it might be cold outside, but I'll get over it. But I do, like, I am curious, though, if we do find, because it feels like this came up last year and probably will come up next year, like, people, when it's inconvenient, people think about it and wanna talk about it. So I do wonder, we don't have a system in place now to have an on-demand ban like Allison is getting to. I kind of wonder, how much work would it take to look into what feasible ways could we do that? Because if there is a more efficient way to have a parking ban in place, that doesn't necessarily mean we just ban everything from November to April, I'd like to know. So I just wonder if, you know, if it doesn't take a great deal of work to find out what those other alternatives might be. Maybe it's a light on top of stop signs at four ways, that kind of thing I've heard about.
I think some kind of physical...
So, yeah, I'm just curious, because I think that that would help answer the questions, but anyway, that's my perspective on it.
Okay.
Can I just make one final comment?
Sure, sure.
To, so for some people, it does have a very big impact. If you have, I also used to have an apartment downtown, and, or my husband did. And if you have small children and you live in an apartment downtown, then, and you need to run out to your car, and you have a baby sleeping in the apartment. It is just the difference between being able to do it and not being able to do it, when everything that you do means carrying a car seat back and forth. So this is where I've heard a lot of feedback from people, when it's like, single mothers living in apartments with one or two young kids that are really, it's, I mean, it's kind of life-altering for them. And so I just think that would, is a perspective that we could keep in mind.
I just wanna summarize, all good points, by the way, and I don't think it's a black and white answer to this kind of thing. I think one of the challenges we have of the other towns that I do watch TV and see that, you know, Castine's got a 6:00 at night to 6:00 in the morning, they have a tendency of overreaching on their bans. They do it for hours beyond what would be absolutely normal, oftentimes 12 hours. So the impact of that, one, can be worse than what we're looking at right now, one. Two, the communication thing, Nina brought it up, I think this is one that's a real challenge. Maybe the website thing may help with some of that, but I think we're having a lot of problems getting communication out to people effectively in all towns the size of Camden. That's a bit of an issue also. So those two things have me lean towards, you know, let's keep monitoring it, but with open eyes and see how we can, if we could find a way to communicate better, more effectively, then I would think it might be more appropriate to look at a scheduled townway, because it does snow during the day, too.
Beautifully.
Which one?
They manage to, every time there's a snow day for kids at the school, the school system, constantly having to let us know that kids are coming home early, they're not going to school today. Everybody has figured that out.
And I think we could, too. I think we could, too, it's communication.
And maybe there's a way to set up that system. The call, the phone system.
Email system.
Email system, you know, but it would take some time to set it up. But you can, if we do it with enough setup time, maybe we can do that, much like, because she's right, the school system, it's not a, there's not a kid around that doesn't know how to watch for those snow days. And a parent either. And so if you wanna avoid your car being towed, you're gonna figure out how to pay attention.
Real quickly.
So there's a way to set it. It would take some time, but maybe that's something we move forward to.
All right.
Actually, like that idea, we could look into that. One thing I just wanted to add is that the timeframe, we do have the parking ban, it isn't really nearly enough to clean the downtown.
No.
So, I mean, we're actually working beyond that, so any hindrance in that timeframe really, really makes it tough to clean up. And, you know, we're here to serve the public, but we also really need to be careful of the employees when they're doing this work, because having those cars parked in those places when there's snow and they're cleaning up, it really puts us at liability, because I've been in other places where I've seen a lot of accidents when cars aren't, are in the road, and, I mean, it's just inevitable. We're gonna hit those vehicles, and that's just another component of it.
One of the advantages of having a notification system is you could extend the ban to times beyond 1:00 to 5:00 AM.
Sure.
Right.
You could, you could have it notified, you know, the ban will be in effect until 8:00 AM or whatever, based on what the storm is. So it could be a much more efficient way to make it.
I like that idea. I really think that's kind of a novel idea, but, you know, everybody has a cell phone for the most part, or if you have a phone or a vehicle and you're parking, you would have to have one.
If you have a vehicle and that's the rule, it's...
Well, I mean, I don't know of any other towns that are doing that, you know, but I think that's a great idea for parking.
Oh, you have one question?
There's another model out there with other councils.
One question from the floor, Nita. Yeah, you have to, please. And then we'll bring us to a close.
Allison brought up some excellent examples. Nina Brosius Scott, Camden. Allison brought up some excellent examples of some of the, in particular, people that, you know, it makes sense that they would need to have that more ready access. Having just come from visiting my little grandchildren, I totally recognize the difficulty of trying to handle little children. I'm wondering whether there might be some possibility where there could be sort of a special dispensation or a special, almost like a handicap sticker, for somebody who lives downtown, the single mother who lives downtown has the sticker that says, "I have been given permission, but fully informed of this very important parking ban." And so, and then the police department would have the four or three or two names of the people who've been given that special dispensation, they get a call, you know, beware.
ZDA special exception.
Pardon?
You can apply for a ZDA special exception.
Yeah, I get that. Well, we're not gonna change the policy here.
That's just an idea of, of doing an exceptional thing. And then the drunk driver concept is perhaps the police department could do special, you know, give a ride to someone.
Special dispensations.
I mean, older people, too, that have, that have mobility issues, it can be a lot harder down the block.
Sure, thank you, Nina.
Our own town, I mean, we have a townwide parking lot.
Sure.
Nobody wants to walk over to the next one.
Rick, you had a final point?
Well, I guess I would have questions. A lot, I don't know if a lot of people actually know what we do down there in the middle of the night, what goes on, what the process is, and why we need the parking ban.
Uh-huh.
First of all, how are you gonna notify everyone? You have other town people that are down there in Inns and, and, and other places down there, staying in the cars that are parked on the street. They're supposed to be told to park in the parking lots. I don't know if that gets done all the time, because they are down there. If we don't, if we can't, we have to be in there, we'd be, we'd have to be out of there by 5:00 in the morning, 5:00 or 6:00 in the morning. We can't do much down there, there's too much traffic.
Mm-hmm.
Off on the side streets, Bayview Street or something like that, we can do stuff. But Route 1, it's 4:30 in the morning, it's, traffic's picking right up, and you can't do anything down there. So, I just, I, I don't know, not, trying to notify people, let people park down here. The weathermen don't even know when it's gonna snow. How are we gonna know?
Well, this is a work in progress. Let's keep working at the progress. And, and, and discussion is a good thing, like we're doing right now, and I think that's great, cause it puts ideas on the table, and, and we should stay at it. You know, I don't think there's any perfect answers. There's no perfect right or perfect wrong. But thank you.
It's not working perfectly now. There are, there are definitely cars down there sometimes when we need to.
Well, yeah, and, and snow is not limited to 1:00 to 5:00, as we know. It's, it can be from noon to 5:00, also.
That's, that's the thing.
But it's cleaning up at the end of the storm.
It's not, we do, it's not, we don't get there till the following night.
Right, right, right.
And the storm doesn't end till 7:00, 8:00 in the morning. We're not doing anything.
And that's correct.
Not till that following night. So, that's, it's not just when it snows.
Great discussion. We'll keep it going. Thanks so much, guys. Great job. Great job in the last few storms, by the way, also.
Pardon?
Great job in the last few nasty, mushy, slushy storms we had, not the fun ones.
Those are the worst storms.
And thanks for the, thanks for the data on the sand and salt. That was very, very informative.
That's great that we're keeping such detailed data. I was really impressed, like, wow, they have all of this.
Great metrics.
Thank you.
Great metrics. On the sixth item on the agenda is a public hearing for the renewal of a liquor license for Camden Bagel LLC, doing business as the Big T Snack Shack at 20 Burnstown Road. Better knows a snowball. Just a few comments on a reason for the public hearing is to get public input on any matter at hand, as in this liquor license, for example, from the public. We ask anybody from the public who would like to come forward during the public hearing to state their name and also their pro, con, or just discuss the liquor license issue. We ask you to be courteous, brief, and to the point. All questions through myself. And once the public, everyone in the public has spoken, I will close the public hearing portion and revert to the select board for a decision. The public will not participate in that portion unless the select board member has a question of a previous, a person who has spoken. That said, is anybody here from the public would like to speak for, against, or just speak to this liquor license issue for the Camden Bagel LLC license? Not seeing any hands, I'll close the public discussion and revert to deliberation by the select board. Mark?
I'm curious. I'd love to ask Mr. Senders, how it's been going? You know, cause we did sort of a trial program, and I'm curious to know what the response has been. There's, obviously, there's been, according to the application, there've been no problems as far as the police are concerned or any of that, so.
Alright, no.
I'm just curious on your experience.
It's been going well. Not really much sales. I mean, I wouldn't, but it's been going well. It's nice, nice doing it from noon on. Makes it more casual, makes it more, just kind of every day. It's not a distinct time. It's something we can watch closely, and it's been going well.
Any, any changes you're planning?
Um, just.
Besides being outside?
Besides being outside, no. No changes. No, you know, staying away from bottles, only cans.
Yep.
Limited, you know, limited variety.
Why is that with the bottles?
I just don't.
Open glass?
Yeah, I just don't wanna deal with it. Open glass. Just wanna keep cans. Makes it easier for returning and moving around and lugging up really small stairs.
Thanks, Mark. Do you wanna speak for or against, or?
For it?
No, I'm only kidding.
Yes, please.
I closed the public hearing, but I'm just teasing you. Thanks, Mark.
Thank you so much.
And good job, by the way. Any other select board comments, or?
I was kind of in the middle of asking him questions.
No, no, no. We're gonna go to a motion to, except for this is liquor.
No questions.
This, do you have a question of whom?
No questions for the, from, we're not allowed to ask questions?
What, if you wanna call somebody in the public up and ask a question, you can.
Well, just Mark. It, not like a.
Okay, ask Mark them back.
Um, because there is a, a change. We're now gonna have alcohol being served outside.
By the trailer.
By the trailer. I, I looked at the diagram. It was the drawing I found to be a little bit hard to.
A little rough.
A little rough.
Yeah. And so I talked to Chief Gagni, and we're gonna, we're doing netting, not ropes.
Snow fencing.
Snow fencing, yeah.
Oh, great.
Um, and so what it's gonna be, it's gonna be two U's basically that come together. And so there'll be a jog in the entrance, so no one can ski in or out. So they'll have to walk in.
Oh.
And it'll be totally enclosed.
How are you gonna prevent people from going in?
A chicane?
Oh, you.
Like a serpentine?
Yeah, exactly. So you have to go like a little S. It's not like a straight through.
It's a chicane.
It's a chicane.
Yeah, skis won't fit. I don't want people skiing up to it.
That's a good idea.
Well, it's.
It's a commonly used technique and at ski places to keep the skiers out.
Yeah. Well, it's, no, you want them in, but just not on skis.
Interesting. Okay. Um, and you're gonna be able to carefully monitor not having people go from.
Right.
Lodge to the, it's not like a continual party, it's.
It's enclosed. There's no in-between.
Start and finish in one.
And there'll be signs saying, "No, no alcohol beyond this point."
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Great. Sounds good.
Great.
Any other questions? Well, we have them here. And the.
And I was gonna start at 12 also.
I'll make a motion that we approve the, approve the, where is it? Here? Approve the renewal of the liquor license for Camden Bagel LLC, DBA, the Big T Snack Shack at 20 Burnstone Road.
Second.
Any discussion? Calls in favor? 4-0. Thank you so much, Mark, and good luck. Good luck out there. On item seven, which is a discussion update on town activities in terms of the energy initiative, some of which are listed here, and also referenced in Audrey's write-up in the packet. Audrey, do you wanna lead?
Which was really excellent. I hope everybody takes the time to read Audrey's write-up.
I thought I was ready.
And the questions, her central questions were, were our central questions, I think. So that was very well done. Thank you.
So would you like me to sort of paraphrase?
That would be probably the best idea.
Alright, so, you know, over the, the course of talking, you know, investigating different options in regards to, we've been really focusing on solar energy, but as we've been working through this, you know, it, it, it isn't just solar. There are some other, you know, mix of renewable energy, which kind of, you know, we, we go through sort of in the memo as we're looking through things. So, some of the main things that kind of have come up is important to everyone in moving forward with any sort of solar project were really five main things. So, looking at contributing to the development of solar energy within the state, and, and making sure that any project that we get involved in is pushing the grid toward a greener, a greater proportion of renewable energy. That seemed to be something that's really important to the Energy Committee. The select board has expressed it as being important part of, you know, any project that you wanted to be involved in. So I think that anything, you know, it's kind of a criteria that if we're evaluating projects that we wanna get involved in, it seemed to be one that we needed to consider. Another, looking at whether or not it contributes to the development of solar energy on marginal land as opposed to prime agricultural land, or land that's suited for other development purposes or conservation purposes. And I, I think that, you know, that was a lot of the discussion around the Union Chemical Site, and why that was so appealing to the town of Camden. Looking at, you know, can we do this as a regional or collaborative effort with other communities? So, is there something that we can do that's broader and beyond just the borders of the town of Camden? Also, looking at, you know, are we going to be investing in a project that can offset a real significant portion of our electrical use? And I, I think that the goal, of course, is 100% of our electrical, our electricity use to be offset with, you know, green power, whether it be solar or potentially another source. So any project that sort of pushes us closer to that, I think is more appealing. And also, looking at, you know, the responsibility for ownership and maintenance of any power generating equipment and, you know, ancillary equipment around that, is something that we need to look at. You know, is that something that we wanna be involved in the long term? And also, any sort of, and I, I didn't put this in this part of the memo, but also the administration of agreements and the relationship with CMP in terms of, you know, the net energy billing and all of that, because there, there's always sort of a cost to anything that we do, whether it be time and effort, or, you know, the actual dollars and cents behind it. So, those were kind of the things that I thought would be really important to look at when we're talking about the different options that we've evaluated. So, one that we spent a lot of time on is sort of a town issued RFP process. We're, we're looking to partner with some sort of solar developer on a project and, and, you know, end up in a PPA, and a good kind of similar, you know, process that we've gone through is the Sagamore Farm Solar Array that we currently have. So we looked at, you know, a number of ways that this could be done. And the first thing that we looked at, of course, was, you know, what sort of buildings or land did we have available that we currently own within the town that we could install solar panels on? So, you know, these are sort of the, the five up here, and I'm not saying, or the four up here are the ones that we have available. It's two megawatts of grid tied solar energy. We would be, you know, the developer, or partnering with a developer to do that. You know, we could specify as part of any RFP process that we ran, that it be placed on marginal land. We would have to define exactly what that criteria was. And, you know, hopefully, we would be able to find a partner that could, you know, could fulfill those criteria. But there, you know, it, it isn't a given that that's going to happen. But I, you know, I'm confident that we could probably find someone to partner with to do that. You know, we could do it as a, you know, collaborational with a number of different municipalities or public entities. But again, it all depends on who we partner with as a developer, and any interest in, you know, communities around us or other communities that we might want to work with. And, you know, we, we could set up the RFP and the PPA, so we offset 100% to 70% of our electricity use. So that's definitely possible to fulfill that criteria. And I think in terms of the fifth criteria, if we're entering into a PPA similar to our current agreement at Sagamore Farm, we'd eventually be responsible for owning and maintaining all the panels and ancillary power generating equipment. There are other types of PPAs we could enter into where we wouldn't be responsible for this, but I'm just saying if we were to go similar to what we've currently done, that would be something that we'd need to consider. And also, I think one of the biggest parts of all this is the town would be responsible for the administration of our agreement with the solar developer, and also all the, you know, net energy billing agreements with CMP. And that has proven to be a major challenge to date in terms of the Sagamore Farm Solar Array. You know, from a financial perspective, you know, it would be, it could be quite advantageous to the town if you're, you know, you're just looking at sort of the net present value once we've paid off the, you know, the PPA, which the model that we looked at with, in the Rough Garden Report, it was a six-year PPA, and then seven years for us to pay off the loan to buy out the investor. So after that 13-year period, we would start receiving free power, and it would be more financially advantageous to the town.
I mean, enormously. When I read it, I was like, whoa, that, it makes, whereas with the other options, I didn't see.
Right.
Well, I'll let you go through the whole thing, but, yeah.
So anyway, that's, that's kind of the benefit. I'd say that from, and Rich Rough Garden did spell it out. He said it's an economic, you know, between doing a PPA or REX, it's, it's the economic benefit is what you'd wanna consider.
Mm-hmm.
Is 25 years the lifespan that should be expected, or is there a warranty?
I mean, I was.
There's no warranty. So, does it get into the details? And we really need to get into it.
But that's the basic thing.
That's correct. Yes, good, all the questions we need to ask.
So another, another option that we've looked into is main power options. They're an energy purchasing consortium, and they're administered through the main municipal bond bank. And they serve as an aggregator for municipalities, not-for-profits, schools. And members can choose to participate in their group purchasing programs. Camden, we've been a member for a number of years now. So they're looking into, given the recent legislative changes, developing a solar program. So this would be a pilot project. They've sought out developers, looking at, you know, some sort of agreement to develop a five-megawatt system. We would, you know, require two megawatts, and they're pretty confident they could meet Camden's full demand, should we choose to be part of their program. So, you know, we would be an investor in a much bigger project that ended up in five megawatts of solar energy being contributed to the grid. It's not, it's, it's a little, little less direct than if we're doing it ourselves, but still, we're, we're pretty, we're pretty involved in contributing to, you know, the development of more green energy. You know, the solar array would certainly be developed on marginal land. MPO is considering cap landfills and land on power line corridors. And it's really important to them that there are, there, look, it's a place that already has an interconnection agreement, or the developer already has an interconnection agreement, because that's proven to be a challenge with some of these projects.
An interconnection agreement?
That they're just able to tie into the, the grid. Yep.
So how would, we know that it's definitely gonna be on marginal land, or how mu, how far along are they in the process? Do they, they don't?
So they, they did tell me, I don't know if they want me to.
Yeah, I don't think so.
Say what the town is right now, but I can guarantee the.
They're looking at a specific site.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. It's definitely marginal land. Yeah.
Remember, it's, it's the first module. They're doing multi-five-megawatt modules per state directive. The first module is what, the five megawatts in this prospective, prospective town.
Right.
On marginal land.
Yep.
So it's not hypothetical for them. They're looking at a specific site, specific five megawatts. And if we go in with them, that specific site can serve our two megawatts?
Yes.
Yeah, we would be, we would be buying two megawatts of capacity out of their five-megawatt array.
Okay.
Yeah. So, you know, and by the nature of how MPO works, it would be a collaboration, because we would be basically entering into a, you know, a group purchasing agreement with a bunch of other, you know, municipalities, not-for-profit schools.
Do we have any board representation, or, I guess it's their governance model that concerns me. I, I like the idea of we're just work with a bunch of other municipalities, and the solar array will be bigger because we're a part of it, and that's great, but the model that they've used so far, I mean, there's a lot of negative press about, or really, the only press out there was negative, with Constellation and how they went through that process. It's just not clear that.
I would take that all with a grain of salt.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, but I, to your point, I think that one of the things, if we were interested in this option, we need MPO to come and tell us, you know, how this all works. Cause remember, this module, as I understand it, only started in, two months ago.
Right.
By Director of the State and the Governor, and company pushing for more.
Well, with MPO, they just, their members started asking them about this, given the legislative changes.
Exactly.
So it was all sort of member-driven.
So this, this, I.
It's a state age, it's a, it's a.
Quasi-state, right?
Quasi.
Quasi-state.
I mean.
Yeah. But I think there are clarifications. I think that no matter which option, there's a lot of due diligence that should occur in any agreement, whether it's a PPA or blah, blah, blah. We need to do our due diligence and make sure we're not walking into something that has any fuzzies. But I, yeah, I did read the, the articles that you mentioned, and they were, you know, no transparency, no.
Well, and I, I did talk with a few people in MPO about all of that, and they went through, after that report was written, they went through OPEGA, who cleared them.
What's OPEGA?
OPEGA's the Office of Program Evaluation and Government Accountability. So they went through OPEGA, and OPEGA cleared them. They went through the Governor's Energy Office.
I didn't know that.
Who said, "We don't think that the findings of this report are very valid." It was never accepted as a, like a full report. It was only a draft.
What's the process that they use to determine who they recommend that the municipalities partner with? And it, not being able to see the evaluation criteria, or the board meetings, or the, I mean, I.
Well, it's not a, it's not, it's like an advisory board only. And the reason for that, and I'm, I mean, I'm not trying to say, yes, we should go with them. I'm just trying to explain that, like, it's just a consortium that aggregates demand and then puts a bid out, and you can choose to participate in it, you can choose not to. So I mean.
Right, I just am trying to see, there's a lot of money to be made.[1774.12]
That's for the energy purchasing, you know, side of it. So, I mean, that's, this is a little different.
It is.
Would the financial bene, is there a chance that the financial benefit or the theoretical financial benefit to us could be, is it going to be?
It would be, it would be a PPA. So all of the, um, all of the different entities that would invest in the solar array that they're developing would each sign, they would each enter into a PPA.
Right.
That would be administered by MPO.
Right.
And then it would be at the end, we would, each of the entities would then own the array and be making, no?
No.
You're, you're basically buying kilowatt hours made by solar, that's what you're buying. The, the, there are two distinct models. One is the model of the, the Rich Rough Garden model, which is just, you know, you own a facility, lasts a long, then you got to replace it versus the model that says I'm buying kilowatt hours for service and what liabilities that diminishes or not is relative. And that definitely has to be looked at. But this one would be buying kilowatt hours for a long-term period, very similar to what the school system in Camden has done. It's a very similar model.
It is kind of like the, this, this compared to, you know, us doing our own PPA, it's kind of like the difference between being an owner and an investor.
That's, that's one issue. That is one issue for sure. But keep going, Audra, this, more to this whole discussion.
Yeah. So I, I think, you know, with this project, um, you know, they, they can certainly accommodate the two megawatts that we need. Um, and, you know, MPO, they'd be responsible for overseeing the program. They'd negotiate and administer the agreement with the solar developer. Um, you know, we wouldn't own the power generating equipment at the end of this. And they would also, you know, we wouldn't need to work too much on the agreement with CMP.
Their general schedule?
What's that?
The general schedule for the first array.
They're looking at fall.
That's right.
Yeah. Fall of 2020. Uh, so, and then another option, the main green power program. So this is run through the Public Utilities Commission. So basically the town enrolls in the program and the program purchases certificates from new, uh, renewable energy facilities in Maine on the town's behalf. And, um, you know, the PUC provides, they provide all the oversight, um, to ensure that only the eligible renewable, um, energy resources are used. And I've got a map of, these are the green power sources that are members of the program.
Currently in the system.
Currently in the system.
Yes.
So.
Put faith in the PUC.
So anyway, um, now the, the town, this is, and it's kind of like you go from the most direct or most directly contributing to more green energy and to the least direct. So we wouldn't be, you know, directly partnering with a developer or investing in the development of, you know, renewable power. We would just hopefully be creating more demand, um, for renewable energy. And, you know, by creating that demand, you know, replacing it or reducing the need for non-renewable sources to be used. So, you know, it's like a less direct relationship between us and the development of, you know, sort of green energy option.
So, sorry, what, remind me again what black liquor biomass is?
Black liquor is from, it's from, black liquor is what's produced from pulp and paper mills.
Oh.
And pulp and paper mills use black, the black liquor for making paper to burn in, and, and, and they, they dehydrate it, take the water out and use to feed the boiler to make the steam to make the paper.
The black liquor?
Yep. And it's, stinks like heck. It's a, it's a.
Do they burn it and then that?
What they do, black liquor comes off of making paper.
Oh.
All right. You make paper, black liquor comes off. Black liquor is an noxious little sucker. If anybody's been around a paper pulp, paper mill in the last, well, 20 years ago, you didn't want to be in the town. They, they go through evaporators, reduce the water content of the black liquor and burn the black liquor in the boiler that produces the steam to heat, make the paper.
Why is that a carbon neutral?
Well, they use, they're using, they're using, it's not really, but they're just using a waste product to.
So it's like the incinerators, like the traction incinerators count?
Say what?
No, no, they don't.
No, it's, it's, it's used to burn, but anyway, that's what black liquor is.
So there we go.
A good lobbyist for the paper industry at work there.
No, it's just a.
Maybe.
Built one, I knew what it was. But, um.
So, okay. So in regards to that, you know, it's like, it's a less direct relationship there. And in regards to the second criteria, we would have no ability to influence where renewable energy projects will be developed or, like we're talking about here, what even qualifies as a renewable energy project.
Right.
Um, so the third criteria, uh, it doesn't really apply because it's not really a project that's being undertaken by the town. We're participating in a program. Um, and it can be subscribed to by anybody who uses electricity with any of the major electricity utilities in the state of Maine. Um, we can choose to offset, you know, the entirety of our electricity use with, um, main green power options. Um, and also, you know, this is kind of the least administrative intensive.
Yeah.
Option because, you know, we could theoretically sign up as soon as our, well, for the 40% of our energy needs tomorrow to main green power and then the remaining 60% once our contract is finished with Constellation.
Which is November.
What's the difference between the REX that we have now with Constellation and main green power?
So the, the REX, I'd say like, they're kind of the worst example of, you know, green energy REX because it's a solar farm, uh, sorry, not solar farm, um, a wind farm somewhere out in the Midwest.
That's not necessarily bad.
Not necessarily, but I don't, I don't know if.
Not better than black liquor biomass.
I mean, it's kind of REX where it's not necessarily, like the feasibility of building that wind farm, it was, it was probably already financially viable proposition before anybody purchased the REX. So it wasn't really something that by creating, you know, a demand through purchasing REX, it contributed to the development of more renewable energy.
But it contributes to the demand and it makes, it's like, kind of like the, your vote counts, like.
Well, I'm not, I mean, not saying it's, it's not, it's, it's better than nothing, but it's not as good as something where, you know, you're.
Can't take a selfie with it either.
Directly, yes.
The main, um, green power program are class one, um, REX and from Maine only.
Class one A.
Class one A.
And opposed to Constellation, which is.
Correct.
Which is what? Constellation.
I.
I think it's the same thing.
Thing which seemed compelling, the audit process. I'm not saying that's what I want to go with, but when I read the Constellation E-green, whatever, at the time when I read it, I was more knowledgeable about it. But, um, it was compelling, whereas this, I'm like, it certainly didn't include wood waste solids or biomass. It was just wind and solar.
Principally.
Yes.
Yeah.
I would say too, the city, um, they have these, um, green power districts now, which they're, this program is pushing. So City of South Portland is.
Signed up for.
Signing up, signed up for that program. And what that does too is it brings in the entire town, the whole city into it and allows them all to buy into that program. Brunswick did that, so it's not just the town, Brunswick or City of Brunswick, it's the entire town is able.
Includes commercial, residential. That's one of the advantages of the PUC program and, because in a parallel track, we.
It's not just focused on municipal use, it's everyone's use.
Yeah, it's commercial.
Right. Since it's a state program that's, it's highly dependent on, not dependent on, but susceptible to lobbyists who, there are all these bills all the time trying to get it so that, you know, landfill gas will count as renewable energy or, you know, the EcoMaine even. They're constantly trying to push bills to make it so that their incinerators count or, so it seems like a little bit of that is at work here.
That's true. But it's, but it's, it's an option that lies out there and we still need to get some state input on that from, well, mentioned to Vicki and others who have some knowledge in this area, I believe. Um, but, but, and the parallel track to your point is true. Uh, this is one that has the benefit of, we could have a green lawn project that gets the same thing we do with lawns and fertilizer to get people to sign on to this, this, uh, as, as an option for a power supply.
Because I think it's important, the watershed school report, when they talked about what the, you know, the big consumption that we have in town is people's homes.
Yes, absolutely. Absolutely.
And so that combined with some other things, I think the town and the, um, Energy Committee can work on, 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 you know, efficiency Camden program would be, go a long, long way to reducing everyone's overall.
Right. It was interesting that this is something available right now that you can.
Buy tomorrow.
It is, buy tomorrow.
Go on the.
And, and I saw the prices, it's pretty reasonable.
Pretty reasonable.
I was surprised, that seemed like.
And saw that Unity College is now purchasing all their power from there and lots of, lots of institutions are in the state that used to be, I mean, remember, they got, they left all of the, um, their investments in oil.
Their average price seemed a lot lower for some reason than the normal REX, renewable energy source, which is kind of pleasantly surprising.
Very much about black liquor.
Maybe that's what it is, black liquor biomass.
Right.
Yeah. I hadn't heard that term in years. Anyway. Um, anyhow, Audra, I guess that brings us to, you know, having looked at, but, and by the way, one of the elements that we need to mention, I think is part of this is the, you mentioned the sites and the town, Public Works, uh, this building actually, I don't just, just go through this building.
We can put solar panels on this building?
Well, we, we, what, sorry?
We can put solar panels on this building?
I'm sure we can. Um, but on Thursday, we start the performance contracting work with Siemens here to look at these because, why? Um, and not just looking at just the solar, but I'm sure that's going to come into play. But in performance contracting, for the benefit of the town, we get, we pay through guaranteed savings that they will calculate and figure out for whatever we do at Public Safety, Public Works.
Why don't you give people an overview of what you've been working on with that?
I'll, I'll let Audra do it. She's smarter than me.
All right. Do, do we want to kind of summarize this?
Oh, sure, sure. Go ahead.
Um, so, yeah, really, I guess to move this forward, I think the most important thing the board can do is really determine of the criteria that we've talked about that are sort of important, um, criteria in establishing, you know, what, what we want to do for a project. What's the most important? You know, is it, is it purely the financial aspect of the project?
Right.
Is it, you know, what we were talking about with how directly are we contributing to green energy being, um, you know, supplied to the grid? Or is it, you know, um, ease of administration and making sure it's something that we can move forward with quickly? So, you know, there's a number of values.
Curb appeal.
Curb appeal. There's a number of values involved in, in this that, you know, what, what prevails for all of you, what's more important? And that's going to be really important in deciding what option is the best.
Right.
And also, you know, I think that resolving, do we want to offset or do we want to move forward with the solar panels on sites that we do have control of?
Right.
Quickly, regardless of, you know, what we want to do for the remaining 70% or however much it is.
Right. And that brings us to the performance contracting thing that we were talking about. I think you've already mentioned it in a previous select board meetings, I recall. Um, performance contracting is basically where you have an entity come in that called ESCL. Don't ask me what the acronym means, but Siemens, Honeywell, a whole bunch of them do this kind of thing, but they basically come in and look at your building and look at everything and the heating system, the cooling system, the, the lights, I mean, the ceiling, everything.
Like an efficiency audit?
It's basically, it's a bit, yes, it is that. They also would look at, you know, power generation options and invariably, they do a lot of this for schools across the state, um, from, based in Portland. But basically, they guarantee whatever they come up with, they guarantee a savings in kilowatt hours, uh, based on whatever they're, whatever option they're coming up with. Um, they actually guarantee 90, to be technically correct, they guarantee 90% of the, um, of the savings because honestly, things change year to year. We, we have a savings in a building and all of a sudden people are working overtime and the power costs go up because you're working overtime kind of thing. That's why it's 90%. But they're coming in on Thursday, I believe, to look at a couple of our buildings to start. And I was just saying, invariably, you know, they will, and I'm the strong belief that they will come up with solar options for the Public Works, Public Safety, maybe this building and potentially another, but we don't have lots and lots of buildings. But, yeah, that's kind of a parallel track. I think that we don't have to make all those decisions. We'll do a parallel track and see what, what falls off the truck. So someone's going, you, you kind of can't close, in my opinion, you can't close off one option and slam the door. You don't do that. Um, but we're lucky to have these things going on in parallel, I think, uh, so that we can look at, um, because I do agree with curb appeal. I think this town does need to show we're doing our thing with solar and, you know, renewable energy and it's visual, part of it is visual. I think it's very important because we want to encourage people, residents, businesses, et cetera, downstream to be doing some of this at the same time. Because everybody knows or should know that the town's megawatt usage is probably in the order of, uh, two, two-point-something megawatts per year, megawatt hours per year, um, I'm sorry, kilowatt hours, two million, one million kilowatt hours per year approximately. The town, the rest of the town is probably five times that. So, you know, that's, got to keep that in perspective. Um, that's not a small nut, uh, and is part of our discussion. But I think you're, you've got the points down, I think, pretty well here. Your summary is a great report, um, well done by you all.
Yeah, thank you.
Really, it really helps so much. And it's exciting because there's so many things we can get to and, and schedules involved too, because some, some things can take years, that's unacceptable. Um, we, we're working at this and we want it implemented ASAP. Uh, that's, that's a given.
Yeah. So I guess based on whatever you all decide to be most important in terms of the factors that we talked about, you know, that's going to give us our marching orders is how, you know, how do we move this forward? Do you want us to, um, you know, work with someone like Rich to do an RFP for a PPA to find a partner development? Do you want us to do more with MPO to find out the details of their program and how we fit that into what we're currently doing? Or, um, you know, are we interested in, um, you know, main green power and, you know, kind of quickly moving forward with that and then seeing if we can, you know, get something out there to extend it to all residents and businesses in Camden?
Correct me if I'm wrong, but it seems like we're very much at that point where you've almost done it here, where you've laid out a, a matrix of decision, oh, no, sorry, advantages and disadvantages of each of these various models.
Right.
Um, and I think if, um, my personally, I'm a, I'm an engineer, like to see things summarized in that basis so we can make a logical decision for the town in terms of initiatives going forward, because there's a lot of stuff in here.
Yes.
There's a lot of stuff in here. It's kind of got my head spinning positively, uh, about these, these kind of options. So I think we should consider how we take that into a decision mode. Um, it's, because it, there's a lot.
Mm-hmm.
And, you know, one of the, I'm sorry, Allison, I ignored your hand.
Oh, no, I was just letting you know that when you're ready.
I'm ready.
Um, is there any downside to putting out an RFP and seeing what responses we get? Maybe we get some.
I don't think so, because we're not obligated.
Responses that people that have marginal land and.
There's nothing wrong with doing that.
And then we, you know, have something concrete to.
Well, I really, you're hitting on a really important point here, Allison. I think parallel tracks make sense.
Right. And then also explore the main power options thing and see how.
Exactly. Exactly. I think that's all.
Findings as if that would work out and then.
You know, even with the.
RFP responses to compare with the main power.
Out an RFP, I mean, we've kind of already gone down this road with the, um, you know, the streetlight conversion project. I'm sure if I spoke to Rockland, Brockport, Union, you know, all the municipalities we're already working with that we neighbor with, there's going to be some of them who are interested in doing it with us.
Well, I can assure you that's true.
Yeah.
I mean, so. Make it harder or easier in this case?
I think it makes us more attractive because the bigger.
It does.
The bigger, yeah, demand that we're creating, the more interested parties there are going to be.
And maybe the more difficult to ensure that it's on marginal.
When we have a stake in it. I mean, when we're directing the RFP.
We'll logically have the principal stake in it.
Right.
Because we're the biggest town.
Largest one likely because of our demand. We need to.
Yeah, I mean, we're easily, we're...
What are you having, in terms of like massive tracts of marginal land? They, marginal land by definition, kind of tends to come in a little bit more like small bits and pieces. Like, especially if, you know, the, the more marginal, the better. So, super contaminated, I don't know. It seems like the really big projects that you see, clear cut forests, or not that that's necessarily a...
I, I think a lot of it that we'd be looking at around here are major power line corridors where maybe there was a major power plant that doesn't operate or exist anymore, that needed to get their power to the grid.
That's true.
And the corridors exist, but the power plant no longer operates. I'm not mentioning any names about what the facility is.
That would be more like the main power options kind of thing.
Yeah, but I'm, I'm assuming that, you know, any developer who would respond to an RFP that they're doing would also be interested in working with us because we're creating almost half the demand of that project.
Same idea.
Yeah, but I, I, I'm sorry, go ahead, Taylor.
I'm just going to agree fundamentally with what you guys are saying. I think we have enough information so that the idea of being able to compare apples to apples as best we can with these different approaches, I guess, is really helpful. I think, you know, operating on a parallel track, so we're drilling down a little more at least into what do we have for main power options to compare to potentially what an RFP might look like. You know, maybe it'll make it easy for us because the RFPs are either great or not great at all, and it makes the decision super, super easy.
It could, it could.
Approaching it that way so that we can compare apples to apples as best we practically can would be great.
We're, you know, we've been talking about having this select board meeting, and I still have bruises in my back from Anita hitting me for not putting it on sooner, but on the agenda.
That's actually hurt her arm.
That's, that's why she broke her arm. But now, I'm like, no, it's serious, it's important stuff. But we've been trying to put some, more flesh on the bone. And I think we're like 70% flesh on the bone to, to lead towards making a parallel track, logical decisions. But there's probably a few more small qualitative issues we could close on real quickly and then be able to bring it to the table for the select board to make logical options about the parallel tracks. It shouldn't, it's, we're, we're almost there.
Can we just put out an RFP though? Is there any reason to delay that? We're not making any decision about what we're going to do, but it would just speed up the process of knowing our options.
Does, does this sound good for marching orders from all of you? I will contact some of our neighbors, see if they're interested in participating with us, and figure out who is, and then we can work with Rich Roughgarden on writing up an RFP to send out.
I think it makes a heck of a lot of sense in parallel. But in a, that's a great start, I think. But in parallel, we've still got these other things we have on the table here. We need to take a look on how, what was the best way to do that. Mark, I'm sorry, I didn't ignore you.
I'd like to back, I have a lot to say. I'd like to back up a little bit before we start making some decisions about why this is so important. First off, I'd like to thank everybody in the board and Audra. I was the only person on the board, and we had a different town manager when we did the solar farm at Sagamore Farms. And at that time, I started out alone in wanting to pursue that. And, you know, everybody came around and with the great help from the Energy Committee, because they were the, really, the people that spearheaded this. And I'm sort of right now as far ahead of everybody else right now in, in terms of where I'd like to see this go. And I'll talk about it for a minute. I'm serious about this. First thing, I want to read a, just a paragraph or two. There's an article in The New Yorker this week about the Australian fires. And it's going to read a little bit from part of it. "It's possible that by 2030, the Arctic Ocean will be ice-free at the end of the summer, which brings us to the question of what it means to wake up. If in the past year or past decade, the world began to understand how dangerous climate change is, it certainly didn't act like it. In the past 10 years, more CO2 was emitted by all of human history up to the election of JFK." Gives you an idea of, you know, how serious this is. And there's a couple answers. Great work here, and there's great solutions, and people are moving forward. I think we can do more. I don't think we want to just be working along with everybody else. I think we, we can and, and should do more. And what I'm looking, when I look at these things, the things that I, I see, one of the things that Allison mentioned is expected, if we did our own solar farm, the expected lifespan of solar panels is 25 years. The town can expect the savings of approximately $3,264,000 over a 12-year period. And that's important because that's money we can use if, if we do this to, one, bring some financial relief to the citizens of the town, but also, we can, what I'm interested in is doing our own solar power so that we cover not only our town's solar, but we also have enough credits or whatever from our generation to cover all of the usage in the town. That's what I'd like to see. And we can use that money to do that. Now, yes, there's administration costs and, and maintenance costs, but there are people that can be hired to do that, and there's enough money to do that. But the important thing is, as Jeremy mentioned, I was going to bring up, when Watershed did their study, the, the majority of, of usage of electricity is heating a lot of the old buildings and a lot of the old homes in town, not buildings, but homes. And those are situations where, you know, people can't afford to fix, you know, 1,800 buildings and make them totally efficient and stuff. But if we, there's some things we're working efficiency-wise and doing. But I think that if we can bring solar to all of those solar energy, all those people, maybe at a reduced cost, because that's the, one of the things that doing our own solar does. It gives us a reduced cost. It really puts us in the forefront of looking beyond just, yes, we're safe, we're cool, we did the town's energy, and now we can sort of go on the way life was. And I think we need to do more than that. And one of the reasons I think we need to do more than that is, for the last couple of years, I've been doing research project with a company and following worldwide events. And one of the things that's made the biggest difference to me is this woman here. And I'm holding up the Time Magazine Person of the Year, Greta Thunberg. I've been watching her since, basically, she sat by herself at 14 years old in front of the Swedish Parliament and said, "I need to make a difference." And I've been following her and some people and what she's done. And I think we need to be in the forefront and not just being comfortable with what we're doing with energy, but really leading the way. And I think in order to do that, we need to go beyond the main power options and stuff. Like, that we need to look at doing it ourselves and doing it so that we can not just take care of the town, but take care of our citizens in a unique way that maybe other people can work towards. So, those are my...
Yeah, no, cool. Obviously, I'm not going to make final decisions here tonight. This is a discussion. So I could go on for hours on the various elements of, of all the models, and we shouldn't preclude any model. But I'm trying to think of the ways to bring this to a head, and I don't see any problem with doing paper. Paper doesn't cost anything except the labor of poor Audra's and staff to send out RFPs to get, have the information. Why wait? Just do it. But regardless, I think the first thing would be information, information from MPO, information from the neighbors, information, information. And then we could probably, I'm thinking, be wise to schedule a, kind of a, bring all the parties to the table, kind of a workshop ASAP to look at, you know, how we resolve these issues. Because the financial ones are heavy, the operational ones are heavy, meaning there's many elements to them. And we have to look at all the elements and make sure we have them all on the table. You're not going to do it here tonight.
But can we, no, go ahead. So, there always should be more to talk about. And I agree with, with everything that you're saying, Mark, that, like, I tend to be kind of a radical thinker too, and I want to push the limits as much as possible. I don't want that to keep us from doing something now. So we could do, you know, this, just, you know, looking at the town's energy use. And if we come up with this model that works really well, then that provides all of the sort of support needed to say, okay, now we're going to go big, and we're going to do a second round. And that round is going to be for, you know, every Camden resident to be able to buy into.
I think we, we should focus on doing our own thing really well and being really comfortable with the decision we make. And then looking at doing something bigger because I think that, you know, that's, we need to have experience in doing a big program before we do a really radically big program.
Right. Because we, I mean, let's be honest, we're not the best. We, you know, we have once solar array, and it has been managed, it's been a challenge a little bit.
It has been a challenge, yes.
But when, when you're saying, let's get all the parties together and sit and talk, and does that mean that we have to wait until then to do the RFP?
No.
It feels like, to me, it's like, do the RFP as quickly as possible and...
There's no problem with doing anything, absolutely not. You shouldn't, parallel tracks mean parallel tracks. All I'm saying is that the more info we have ASAP, the better, the smarter we are.
Right.
PPA, RFP, information from MPO, models, and financial models from Rich Roughgarden, and, and some of the frailties of them, and some of the solid parts of them. There's, it's not black and white.
Right, right. But we could still, I mean, there's no reason that we can't say, these are our criteria, two, we've got, Cameron's got two megawatts, hey, do you want to...
That's correct, that's correct.
Let me, let me just say, yeah, I, I agree that we need to move forward. I have no problem with the workshop, but I want to make sure as soon as we have a workshop, we again, schedule discussion, the select board again, really quickly. So we're not taking this down line. The one other thing, the other saying, the other thing I, I've noticed, and it's in discussion, a lot of things, I question the use of the term marginal land. Because in terms of the importance of what we're doing, sometimes I, I have to think that sometimes, you know, the land we use for solar doesn't have to be marginal because that's a more important usage than just about anything else right now. If it's not being used for something else and go, oh, that's not marginal land, that's no reason to stop considering that land. I think that's a false assumption about the importance of what we're doing.
That's true. But if marginal land's available, it should be a priority.
If, if it is. But if it's not, it doesn't mean we stop.
You know how much marginal land there is in Maine? You've got millions of acres.
Clearcutting...
I mean, there's a, there's a scale. So, the problem is, a lot of the land that we have right in Camden is very valuable so that people can live within walking distance. And every time you allow somebody to live right in town and, and get them walking and not having to commute, that has a really big carbon impact as well. So...
Yeah, I don't, I don't think any, I totally agree. You shouldn't wait for another meeting to make more discussion.
And like I said, what you define as marginal land is up to all of you.
Yes, it is.
It's, it can be a scale. We can also phrase that in a way that just says that proposals that make use of marginal land, such as blah, 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 will be given, you know, will be viewed more favorably.
Absolutely. Yeah.
Get input from anybody here before...
Anita.
Anita Burris, Scott, Chair of the Energy Committee. First of all, I want to thank you very much for having this discussion, for putting that report together, for getting all this information. We're very, very pleased with the high priority that Camden Town is putting on renewable energy. The first question I have for you is, you're discussing an RFP, and I may not have been paying attention enough, although I thought I was. It's not clear to me what, what exactly you'd be asking in that RFP. Are you looking at our rooftops? Are you looking at this land somewhere in Maine? Are you going to be asking in your RFP, are you going to be asking for a certain number of megawatt hours? And are, how are you going to cover our electricity? I have another thing after that, but go ahead and answer that question.
Well, again, it's a parallel track. We're, to answer your quick, good question. 30 or 40% of the power, we think we might be able to generate by doing solar on our existing buildings. We're going to, well, yeah, yeah, land. And we're going to, we're looking at that starting Thursday. We're on it. Now, just in parallel track, we can put out a number and an RFP, whatever we think is appropriate. If it isn't exactly right, the model just changes physically and financially. So you could go out for 2.1 million kilowatt hours if you wanted to. Or, yeah, you could, or three. But it's just, yeah, this, remember, this is, you're going to, whatever comes out back is going to be tweaked by, because what's going, for example, what if we exaggerate? The performance contractor says, no, you can't put solar anywhere on any of the buildings in town because Anita said it can't handle the load. You know, whatever. You know, that could change, what were you putting into the model. So we, we can play with that a little bit.
Well, maybe this brings up, maybe we aren't as clear on that as what the RFP, in my mind, what the RFP would say is, would, it would be setting aside for the moment the, you know, these four sites because we know that the performance contracting organizations, they might come up with their own thing.
That's correct.
If at the end of it, they say they're not going to put solar panels on the Public Works building, then we might do it ourselves. But the purpose of, of the RFP that I would hope we would put out quickly would be, at, at the minimum, would be two megawatts or whatever we determine to be the town use. And it would...
Total town use?
No.
Minus...
Municipal...
Municipality.
That would be the minimum. So we would say, and then we would provide a range. That's where we're going to do hopefully a semi-quick consultation with some of our neighbors. And so whatever is determined to be sort of the best language for, okay, these are our criteria, we're looking for anywhere between two and 10 megawatts of, you know, power generation. And, you know, you can provide your marginal...
So, are you also asking, are you also anticipating this RFP that, that this would be like a PPA, that we would take ownership? Or is this an MPO type of approach or a main green energy type of approach? Because we've been talking about a number of different approaches.
You can actually do it both ways. An RFP can be done both ways. You could ask for a PPA type, like we have a revision at Sagamore Farm, and option B being, you know, direct sale of kilowatt hours. You can do both. You don't have to limit it to one.
So basically, it's general enough, the request for proposals is that we, we're using this much energy. How can you help us?
Well, are you, do you have a...
In renewable energy?
It'll be quite that general. But it will be...
Relatively broad.
It'll be, well...
Do you have a strong, does the Energy Committee or you have a strong preference for owning the panels at the end versus not? Or are you interested in...
I can't speak for the committee on that question because I think that we...
You take to play with that. That's a loaded question.
I think you're going down the right track, and you're certainly discussing things that we're interested in.
It seems like we should be mostly as broad as we can without being so broad as to make it, you know, indiscernible what we're actually asking for.
Remember, we, we kind of have that Sagamore Farm today. We have a PPA written, and we have the option to buy it out in, what is it, five years, seven years, whatever it is, the number. You don't have to buy it out. You could continue to pay for kilowatt hours. It's the same thing. So you have, it could be, it's reasonably flexible, Allison, but it's not completely flexible. I agree. It does matter if we, if we did or didn't have a Rockport or a Hope or somebody involved with us. That is different.
So as you're looking at this option of putting out an RFP, are the parallel tracks also the MPO and the green, main green energy?
Sure.
Those are the parallel tracks. So, so that basically you're saying, well, we want to be further informed on our options for option A of...
Yeah. Yes. Remember, if you go on parallel tracks, you don't know what tripwire you're going to hit first. Example, what if MPO comes to us and says, to get you involved in the, what they predict to be a fall operational solar plant of five megawatts, we're going to need you to sign up by May 1st. That may happen. And then we'll have to make a decision. But notwithstanding that, we...
Or it's going to cost, there's going to be like no financial benefit to the town and, or it's going to cost us.
All right. Basically, yeah, all right. So we're continuing to try to get further informed on these three options. Is that correct?
I think we should. I think we should. My opinion is we should. Again, it's parallel tracks, so...
Yeah. And I'd say that the option that needs the most fleshing out is our own, you know, us doing an RFP and doing our own PPA. So...
Yes, doing it ourselves.
Yes.
Because there's a lot of variations within that option versus the other two, which are pretty straightforward.
There is. There's a lot of finance, there's a lot of financial issues that lurk in the background that we really have to discuss as we afford. We don't want to get into every detail of that yet, but we will.
Okay. And just, this is a, this is a little bit in the weeds, but I just had to throw it out there because we're talking about it. The, the number of kilowatt hours in expansion could cover on Sagamore Farm property. I imagine that's, that would really have to be nailed down one way or the other. Just, just, I just wanted to sort of draw your attention to the fact that when we asked Revision Energy to look at the potential of expanding Sagamore Farm, they said, here we go, two, they said 394,000 kilowatt hours per year or 302 kilowatt size for 302.
I think your numbers are slightly off, that's all.
And, and the, the more recent, this report is saying smaller, 250 kilowatt PV versus 302 kilowatt PV. So the size of the array is not necessarily nailed down at this point.
The first number and the second, like the two, the P, what's this mean?
I could address that if you were an engineer.
It's, yeah, it's...
Has to do with kilowatt, the, the production per year versus the size of the number of panels.
There's a third parallel, there's a third parallel track here with performance contracting. And we're not sure where that will wind up. It won't wind up with all of it, for sure. But it, but there's, we got to get that a little time to cook also. And next weeks, we'll have some of that information. So that's, there's a multiple...
I was talking about like three, two or three buildings, the Public Safety Building that's in kind of like...
No, no, no.
It's not going to cut into this two megawatt thing.
No, no, no. But that's, but then there are other options in town that, that are, could, could be discussed, that could add more.
Maybe some people in town will offer us their building rooftops.
Maybe, maybe. That's a distinct possibility. There's, again, what we're trying to put out is not, whatever we put out in an RFP is probably not going to be the exact number we would actually sign up with downstream. That can be tweaked. That can be tweaked.
Okay. And may I ask... And may I ask, all of this has to do with solar. Is that right? In the discussion on the agenda, there are two, there's a B and a C. Is that not yet being discussed or is that going to be discussed?
Oh, energy efficiency in town buildings is performance contracting.
And the C?
C is, we have, well, we absolutely should. The wind issue is one where you get into discussion of whether or not solar is the most environmentally friendly of the list of renewable energy systems.
I just wondering, I just wanted to know, when you finish this part of the discussion, are we going to go?
Well, we already, we're already there.
We already received death threats, so we're not going to talk about wind.
Well, I mean, the issue, the issue is, you can debate it until you turn blue, but of the renewable energy list, wind and geothermal way up the list for a total environmental perspective. We still have the challenge worldwide of what we do with solar panels. I suspect it'll be solved in time, but in Germany and France, they're having a terrible problem with what to do and how to separate the cadmium and lithium from the solar panels. It's just an issue, a technical issue. So it's environmentally a little less friendly. Two, solar panels don't last forever. They degrade at one and a half percent per year.
You don't need to answer those specifics. I'm just asking whether that.
We are going to talk about that.
Is that discussion going to take?
She just thought maybe we were ready to conclude our energy conversation and that, so I think now we can just say, nope, we're going to get to that next.
Let me, again.
Let me ask though, but since we're, since we're there in the conversation, where are we hoping, where are we hoping to get with our discussion on wind power development? Because it doesn't seem we have a framework other than just talking about it.
That's really, that's what, that's what it's been. Well, well, go ahead, Allison. You have something?
I, I think that we just need to talk very briefly maybe even about whether this is still a topic that is not to be spoken of in Camden. Because that's what it was for a while.
Yeah, it was.
It was, you know, the, the reaction to discussing it was so extreme that it actually, we got disbanded the entire, and by we, I mean they, disbanded the entire Energy Committee. And it was like, there could be no more Energy Committee. And then.
They were shot.
Right. And so, you know, I'm not that well-informed on the specifics of what was studied in the past. I hear things that, you know, Camden has some of the best wind resources in the blah, 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 and we could do this and that. I haven't seen those studies. I don't know what exists. I would like to review them. If there's, if there's stuff that's worth revisiting, I think we should. I don't think it's something that we need to put our whole town staff energy on right now, but it would be good if maybe the selector would say, okay, is this a topic that we still want everybody just to stay as far away from as possible? Or are we lightening, you know, what's the mood of the community? Are we lightening up?
Excellent question, because I think, but you also got to remember that wind power as a source is very highly regarded. And there's, there's nothing that says you couldn't do an RFP for wind exactly what you're doing for solar.
Right.
So it doesn't have to be on our illustrious Ragged Mountain, which has a lot of stuff. In fact, there's your issue, there are technical issues that rain there about where to put that or not. But, so, the real question is whether or not you hit it in the head. Is this, are we concerned environmentally enough to pursue, at least evaluate other options for generation of renewables that are, well, talked to be better environment, from an environmental impact and efficiency? Remember, one of the things in that, one of the things, the reason for that is because solar degrades, wind power doesn't, over the, over the years. Taylor?
Yes, I'll answer that question from my perspective, I guess.
Yes, sir.
I try to look at all of this practically. And to do that, I think, effectively, everything needs to be on the table, including wind power. I think the time that you're referring to, the world was in a different time in terms of our approach on climate change than we are today. So, you know, to Mark's impassioned discussion about urgency. So from my perspective, there's no reason why every option shouldn't be on the table. It's impossible to have an effective evaluation of the best route to get renewable energy at a cost-effective way for the citizens if we don't start with everything. So I think we evaluate it just like we would solar.
Clear. I don't think there's any reason why not.
Oh.
Thank you, Taylor. I would say verbally, I would agree with you. I think you always, it shouldn't, to the, to our responsibility to all the taxpayers of Camden, we should evaluate any feasible options that may, again, on a parallel track. It has to be on a parallel track because there are some aspects of wind that could take possibly a little bit longer to implement than the solar side. But that's, that's notwithstanding, I would agree with you. We should, you open up every box, you turn over every rock, and make sure you've covered all the, all the bells and whistles. Pete?
Can I just speak to that?
Pete?
So Pete Collagen from Camden. Thank you very much for bringing this up. This is very timely. We've been working on this for quite a long time. I'm part of the Energy Committee. I was part of the first Energy Committee that was disbanded. And just so you know, there is two years of, I believe, two years with some intermittency because of broken anemometers of data.
Yes.
From, from the top of Ragged Mountain through University of Massachusetts, I want to think, yeah, I think it was University of Massachusetts.
It was U of M, Massachusetts.
Yeah, so, so that data exists, so that will be, you know, so let's not reinvent the wheel, just so you know.
We don't have to.
And just as Mark said, you know, we in the Energy Committee and I as a watershed faculty member who's working with teenagers every day, the, the, the timeline is important. And, and one thing that I would think of is, you know, we're talking about MPO and main green power, our own possible large site, our small sites around the town. So I would, I would urge the, you guys to think about how to put together a matrix for evaluation. And that matrix should be objective. In other words, cost might be part of the, the matrix, you know, with a value in the sense of, okay, let's put a, let's put a weight on the monetary cost. Let's put a weight on the, you know, the land use. Let's put a weight on the delay or the time that it will take to implement these projects.
Sure.
Let's, let's, let's think about this, and I would encourage, you know, dialogue with the watershed climate change students, that they may be able to help with that matrix. There should be a lot of coordination with them, and I don't know exactly what that would look like, but there may be some resources available there.
I'm meeting with Janet tomorrow.
Yeah, good. And finally, just in terms of, you know, we're talking about a five-megawatt site somewhere in the state on marginal land or a wind farm on Ragged Mountain or somewhere else in the town. The thing that I want people to try to put their mind around is that part of the reason why we're profligate with energy is because we don't see the consequences of its production. We don't live in the tar sands region. You know, we're not, we're not dealing with the downstream toxic waste that the native Canadians are. We don't live in the bite of Benin where oil spills from, from, you know, wells happen or in the Gulf of Mexico or in the shale oil of Pennsylvania. We don't see the consequences of the energy production, and therefore, it's, it doesn't really enter our consciousness. So one of the things I think is important is that in, in, in a very real way, we should see the consequences of our energy use. We should see the panels. We should see that if we want to live the profligate energy lifestyle that we live, we have to say, oh, this will require us to, to fill large sections of land with solar panels or to put wind turbines up on top of our view shed because it's important that we connect our, our energy, where it comes from, with our use. That's very important, and I urge that we, we keep that in mind.
Good point, Pete. Thank you very much. Very poignant.
Good point.
Nina, did you want to say something? Not about communication. Not about communication.
It's just that, I know it's not really on the agenda because you're talking about mostly the wind and the solar panels, but nobody's talking very much about insulation. And that will be probably part of this building's evaluation. But I, that and also any future add-ons or new buildings under the umbrella of the town, I think, should be evaluated in terms of energy. So I'm just saying it's not just that. I think insulation and, and attention to how much lighting is used and all of those other things are another way of addressing that problem.
Thank you, Anita, we agree.
Yeah, definitely agree with you.
We're converting all of our streetlights to LED. You're saving a massive amount of energy.
Sure, sure.
That way, and we, and we definitely talk extensively about insulation, which is why we're having the performance contractors come and do that in the town's buildings.
And nobody in the town, we all have to recognize, all we've been talking about is electrical energy so far to this discussion. The energy is not limited, as we all know, to electrical energy. In fact, the amount of footprint we have because of heating and, you know, burning oil, burning whatever we're burning at home, that's, this whole equation is very, it's very big, and we recognize that, but we've also recognized we can take only so many steps at a time. But again, parallel tracks.
So I just wanted to mention, it is my plan to meet with Anita and the Energy Committee very soon and talk about the Efficiency Camden program that we have talked about for some time. I'm going to need their help. I've met with Brian Robinson on it. I'm going to need the Energy Committee's help to get that off the ground.
Okay, great.
And that will, I think, address.
Address some, and beyond electrical energy.
Correct. It'll help insulate people's homes.
Consumption side of things.
Exactly, which is extremely important because that's huge.
In my role, I'm on the state's Building Codes and Standards Board.
Yes.
And a new, new with the building code that was adopted last year by the legislature, there's a new member to the Building Codes and Standards Board, and that's the Executive Director of Efficiency Maine. And I met with him at a meeting I had in Augusta a couple of weeks ago and talked to him about what I was thinking about Camden, and he is ready to give a staff person some time to devote to Camden to help us get this Efficiency Camden program off the ground, which then would piggyback with the Efficiency Main's program. So not only will taxpayers benefit from the rebates they get from the state, the hope is that we'll be able to double those rebates with some trust funds that we have for.
That's great.
That's, that's the hope. But I need the Energy Committee's oomph to make it work.
Agreed.
Also, I mean, even just right in this moment, the town has trust funds that, we do help needy people through, currently, through the trust funds that have been left by many people in the past. And so the town sometimes pays for people's oil when they don't have.
Or fix a septic system, we've done.
Right, so there, if there are people currently that meet certain income thresholds, for example, if you qualify for, if you're Camden resident and you qualify for TANF or food stamps or Maine Care possibly, there's a really good chance that if there's some insulating that you want to do in your home and you can't afford that, or window inserts from window dressers, for example, submit an application to the town, and that, that is something that we're in a position to help with right now. You do have to go through a little bit of a process where you disclose some income and show that you have need, but the, there's no reason why we have to wait 100% for the Efficiency Camden program. We could do that now.
Good point.
Oh, absolutely right.
I also wanted to mention this, the Siemens folks that are coming in. I sent Maine Development Foundation, I sent in on a, oh, a training for some grant funds that the National Park Service has sent to Maine Development Foundation, and they're allocating, there are only 20, I think 18 towns in the entire state that are eligible for those funds, and Camden is one of those towns. And minimum $50,000 investment for energy upgrades to town, town buildings.
I believe Siemens mentioned that.
I did send that to Siemens.
And they know, they knew about it, yeah. That's great.
Buildings or town?
Town buildings, historic buildings, yeah.
I think it's historic.
Downtown building, downtown historic buildings.
I think it's historic.
I was going to say.
But this is, this is this.
Yeah, this, this elephant.
Why great reason to designate our buildings as?
This elephant, you might mention, I don't know, we should mention window dressers also as part of energy efficiency thing.
Yes, so we're currently working with them to, you know, make inserts for a lot of our windows on the lower floors. So we are chipping away at it.
Did everybody see the vestibule? I mean, that's a, walked into a brand new thing. Our Public Works Department designed that all in-house. They just slid in.
Built it.
This second door, which, I mean, that was a source of lots of cold air coming in, so.
Yeah, this building is a bit of a sieve. But anyhow, that was, that's going on in parallel. But I think you, pretty clearly, we've hearing that, you know, good parallel tracks, absolutely talk to the towns, absolutely get, and we can work on what the RFP should actually say with Rich and Company to figure what sizes and what elements it should cover. I think that should go ahead. In parallel with that, I kind of agree with what you've said, Pete. I, I think that you got to develop a prioritized matrix of, of options and what's the good, bad, and the ugly of them so that it can help us make a logical decision on what.
And I mean, and I think you have, you have that, you have the components of the matrix, you just need to assign a value to them and what's more important.
I agree.
That's a really big priority.
Yeah, I, I think.
But then we can argue about which value you're going to assign to marginal land, and we spend so much time arguing about it that then we don't, because some of the things that we can do do not prevent us from doing other things, so.
And it never becomes 100% objective. You'll get something back and you'll find, okay, there's something about this that works more with what we're trying to achieve, but it might not give you the 25% in one criteria. You know, it's, it always ends up.
We have to see what we get and then just talk about it, not.
It can be an iterative process, Allison, it can be, but we've got to just keep, the wheel is turning, it's turning faster, we've got to keep it turning. And I think we are, we've done a lot. And thanks to the state too for, you know, doing some of the things that started in November with MPO, you know, that's, I mean, that's, I have to give them credit, at least they're, they're moving to, you know, open up the valve, as it were, for renewable energy and blah, blah, blah. Lots of elements to discuss. We could talk ad infinitum here. I think we need to, maybe, maybe after you have some limited feedback on, well, MPO and Jeremy also, the main green, the RFP.
I would, I would like to make sure in light of this discussion, before we send out an RFP, just everybody is satisfied with, you know, the, the way that it's written so we're asking for what you believe to be important. Because I think that if we get that wrong, then we're going to waste some time on it, and I don't want to waste time on it.
And don't want to waste bitters time either. That's, that's not a good thing to do, so maybe we should bring that to the table next.
Before we send it out and advertise it.
And by the way, by that time is because it's not going to happen one day. By that time, we're going to have more information on these other things, and we can upgrade, update those also, right?
Yes, and to be clear on the wind option, everybody wants to look into just the viability of that.
Yep.
Okay.
We also make an effort to collect the information that's already, it would be nice to have on our, on the website, a place where it has just all of the information that we've collected about.
Energy.
Energy.
Yeah, that's not a bad idea.
And it'll, some of it will be duplicated in other parts of our website, but, you know, everything that's ever been done, the Rich Refgarden thing, every watershed school report, the, whatever there is with wind, so that we're not redoing.
Absolutely. Because I've been trying to find one report forever.
I think you may retake that task.
That'd be great.
That'd be helpful, Pete. Anita, that would be helpful. Dory?
Thank you very much. Good evening. I'm Dory Klein. I live in Camden. I live on Ragged Mountain. I'm the former Chair of the Camden Rockport Pathways Committee. I'm sorry, well, that, that's true, but the Friends of Ragged Mountain is what I wanted to say, excuse me. But any rate, yes, we were extremely active back in 2010, 2011. We have a wealth of information, probably copies of every single document that you have here in town as well, as the accomplishments of the Energy Committee. I would like that we would be considered and consulted in finding these documents that you might be interested in in particular. The mention was made about the meter, and there seemed to have been a passage or agreement that, oh, it was done, the meter was done years ago. Yes, it was inoperable for a period of time, but maybe we could just go ahead with that information. I beg to differ. I beg to differ very strongly about. I beg to differ very strongly about maybe not making any decisions about what to do at this point in time without looking at that information first.
Yeah, we're really not at that point right now, Dory.
No, no, no. Point at all. And I agree with you.
So, but to your point, though, I would really encourage, to your point, you made a good point, if Anita, would you reach out to Dory and, and try to collect any information, she, documents?
How about that just, I think it'd be better if anybody that has documents.
Yes.
That should just be sent, all of that sent over to the town so that it can be.
Yes.
And we should put it all on this page that we have.
That's a great idea. That's a great idea.
I assume that the town kept good records in the first place. And I'm assuming that they have records of everything, and I have duplicates, so.
Don't assume anything.
Well.
Could you clarify where those reports specifically should be directed to?
To Jeremy. That's my suggestion. Does, if everybody.
Audra, is that okay?
He did a good job with all the, he collected all the tannery reports and.
Get it all to Jeremy.
Yeah, because just to highlight very briefly, we looked at the ordinances, and we also had a written statement from Bill Kelly, our attorney at the time, who interpreted the law at the time. And so there was chuckling at the very beginning of this meeting where, when wind was first mentioned about the wind committee and whatnot. And I'm sorry that anybody chuckled about anything that anybody has done in regard to the environment or energy, because I know that everybody has worked hard. The Energy Committee has worked tremendously hard. The Friends of Ragged Mountain have worked tremendously hard. And we take it very seriously because we live on the mountain. And a lot of the people who have differing opinions don't live on the mountain. So the Friends of Ragged Mountain will reconvene and share our feelings with all of you about what we've learned, what we feel, what we feel is important.
I think that's great, Dory. You should do that, but especially if you have information, let's get it. Because the more we have, the better off we all are.
Absolutely.
Because as I mentioned to you before, we're not at the point of making a decision about any specific location for anything at this point. But downstream, if we get to that point, we'll all be involved.
Right, no, and we will be as well.
Good.
Thank you so much.
Thanks for coming, Dory. Anybody else in the audience? I don't see any hands, so with that, we'll move forward.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, thank you. And thank you all a lot. Big, fun topic.
Wow, I, phew.
I know. You want to take a break?
Maybe just a minute and a half or something.
How about a five-minute break?
Five minutes.
Five-minute break, Bruce.
Thank you. Welcome back to the Camden Select Board meeting. Next on the agenda is a discussion of three items on respect to fee schedules for town departments, the first of which is the Harbor Committee. Sorry, not the committee, they're not, they're not a fee schedule. They just helped put us together. But discussion of the, which we had a discussion already on some of these fees, and we just need to, especially with regard to Harbor, we need to make a decision tonight. Now, in our packet, there are some Harbor fees comparisons that were there for our look, and there's also the actual, what the heck is it? I was going to say there's the, there it is, the actual, where is it?
Oh, you might be coming around to my.
I saw it before someplace.
It's out of order.
Is that what it is?
Click on it on the left sidebar, it'll take you right there, on Harbor Fees.
Park Fees?
Hit on 8A.
8A. Oh, yes, that's why Allison couldn't find it.
Took me a minute.
Yeah, okay. But anyway, the Harbor Fees are 8A on our, on our little crib sheet here, looking at the proposed increases to the various elements, which we have discussed in the past for the 2021 budget year, correct? And they do need this approved because it's going into stuff as we speak.
Okay, so I found a fee that is not on, well, I don't.
Oh, you didn't?
Think it's on.
On the schedule?
Here. I found it.
Which was it?
Here. This was after discussion with the Harbor Master. I would propose that we eliminate the application fees for the day sailor applications and the fisherman floats.
Where is this located on the sheet?
It's not on your sheet. That's the catch. Or I don't, that's not where I found it, which is why it was off my radar. It's on this other document here, which is the, it's on the schedule.
Got it.
So it's a hidden fee, is what it is. And I don't like the philosophically, for the same reason that we, I forget, we drastically reduced or eliminated the use permit fee or the, that when you come in and you have a new business.
Oh, the change of use.
Change of use fee, like, do you want to turn your building in from a, from doing nothing to being a bakery downtown?
Okay.
So it doesn't, it's always good for the town to know what's out there. And so if somebody wants to come in, if they want to submit a day sailor application, I just don't want to, I think we should eliminate the barrier to expressing interest, just like we don't charge a fee for applying, for a town committee.
I get you. I get you. And it's $100 for day sailor on November 15th, and it's $25 for fisherman float, application fee.
Right.
Ask a question? Yeah, you can ask a question.
Steve, why is the fee there?
That, that fee preceded me coming here.
I mean, I can tell you the philosophy behind charging fees for stuff like this. It's usually to acknowledge there's an administrative cost to processing applications and covering that cost.
Right, like building permits and things like that. I totally get that. Can, if somebody could explain the difference in the staff time impact between processing a fisherman float application and a day sailor application?
I would imagine that there's very little difference, but one is a type of business that we typically have, like you said, lower barriers to, you know.
I think the time that goes into these day sailor applications would mostly be select board talking time. If we get more, then we have to talk more and argue more. I think it just, I mean, we could talk about this for a very long time, but I would move that we eliminate the fee, the application fee for both day sailors and fisherman floats, and maybe if there are other application fees within the harbor that I might not know about.
Are there any others, Steve?
Not that I know about.
Application? Yes.
The waitlist I see is a different thing.
Yeah, but the morning application, it's, well, it's a waiting fee, the waiting list.
Yeah, it's a waitlist fee.
I'm not that, yeah, I'm not proposing to dive into that tonight.
So then.
So I'm kind of flummoxed to tell you the truth because I didn't realize I was here. And it shouldn't be here, it should be in the list.
Yeah, during a discussion today, it was brought up, that that's.
I'll second that for just those two items, if that's what.
Discussion?
Discussion, yeah. Well, the, the question to ask Audra is, my sense sometimes is, you know, you sometimes want to charge fees for the administration of time, but that's why we pay the people to administrate the town. And why should we charge extra money for them to, to do the job that they're hired to do?
It's just a philosophy on, do you, you know, something that is dedicated time towards a certain business or individual, are you expecting all taxpayers to subsidize the time it takes a staff person to do that, or is it a fee-for-service type endeavor? It's just a philosophy, you can choose to do whatever you want.
I totally agree with you.
Some areas we might want to subsidize, sometimes not. We don't charge people to email Audra. We just, all the taxpayers have to assume the cost of different staff people spending an inordinate, inordinate amount of time on.
Some people email more than others.
Different residents that, some residents take more time than others to talk to.
Yeah, that makes sense to me. I think that, for me, the application fee specifically, like with that purpose in mind, makes sense if, if we found a certain type of application, it was all of a sudden like, oh my God, we get 100 of these applications a year, and it's a real pain in the butt.
Like building permits.
If it's applied for the sake of applying, like, if it was a nuisance, that's the word I'm looking for, then it made sense.
Yeah, that's not a huge loss of revenue because we get seven.
Huge amount of time, Steve Wilson.
Is it any, is it any different from char, from charging philosophically for a permit?
I mean, it depends on how you look at.
I agree.
It's supposed to be associated with the amount of time that it takes the town to deal with it. So it's supposed to be reasonable based on that. So that's how we come up with the building permit stuff. Steve Wilson goes out to a lot of, we're reviewing plans, and it takes a huge amount of staff time, and that's why there's a really.
Yeah, for these, it's very few.
Detailed fee schedule. For this, I have not seen that, based, you know, based on what I see in the applications that we get, it doesn't seem like a huge amount of staff time is going into reviewing those before they get to us.
Audra, Audra just said it wouldn't be a huge drain on finances because there are, what, seven, maybe?
It's like $700.
Okay. So how, and my other question is, how long does it take to go through each permit?
I think, yeah, I mean, I don't think anyone is going to be fighting tooth and nail to keep this fee.
No, I don't either. I don't either.
That's what, I want to know.
Move to second question.
What? Discussion. And I said discussion, and we discussed it, all those in favor. Check it out.
Done.
Now, to the hard part. Now, to the hard part, which is the harbor fees schedule. I can get to it again.
And just as a side note, I think we should make an effort to round up any potential fees that are out there that might not be on the...
Me to the nearest dollar or something?
No, just, no, not wrap, not like, find any, any other instances where there are...
Hidden fees, yeah.
Any other hidden fees.
Oh, I was thinking mathematical.
Within the town. No, no rounding.
Okay, no rounding.
Round up.
Bob, I have a motion. I'm, I'm doing this just for, I think this is probably an exercise in futility in trying to be efficient, but I'm gonna do it anyway. I move that we approve the town of Camden 2020 harbor fees schedule as listed.
In the red.
Yes.
Okay. We can have discussion. Anybody want a second?
I'd like to discuss before we...
Can do that.
Well, you could...
You know, in fairness, we should...
Okay, I'll, I'll second it for the...
Okay, let's, let's have discussion on that motion.
Discussion is, is, we received at least one letter, and I know that, I believe there's somebody here to speak about it. I'm admittedly not a harbor person, a boating person. I don't know much about the fees. But there is a sort of a competition or a, sort of two sides to look at it. Number one, we want to be a town that has services accessible to all residents. We don't want to become a town for the privileged. But on the other hand, you know, we don't want to make it so inexpensive that people can get their, whatever they do, and then hang on to them forever and not use them, like that. So there's sort of two ways to look at it. I'm not knowledgeable enough on either side, so I'd like to hear opinions about why. Why should we charge more? Why should we charge less?
One of the challenges we've had, I think, historically with a number of fees, not just the harbor, but is to make sure we're competitive with the market that's out there for similar kinds of service. And that's a criterion, whether you're a boater or not, that applies. And I think in some cases, I'm not saying everyone here, I believe what the harbor committee has recommended and has been stated, correct me if I'm wrong, Mark, is that these recommended fees have been vetted against other locations. That's a correct statement. I'm seeing a yes to his head. So that, that is, that is the basis from which you go. Now, to the second element...
One thing I just want to say to that is, I learned along the way, just because somebody else does it, doesn't mean that it's the right thing to do and that we should do it. Just putting that out there, it doesn't mean...
That's what people say about taxes.
It's true.
So I'm not ready to look at this as an overall thing because I have specific changes that I feel strongly about, mostly strongly. Can I go, can I run?
Absolutely. We can amend the motion to, if we have to, motioner wants to include whatever you recommend.
So could we go through a few things and see if they could be knocked off, and then there are some that are more controversial than others, probably?
I'll withdraw. I said it, I thought it'd be futile, because I thought it would. But I'll withdraw my motion. I tried.
Motion may be modified. Let's keep the motion on the table and see if it's modified. If Allison and we agree on one, two changes, that can be modified. Go ahead, Allison.
Okay. It just ends up taking a while when you have to go through like 15 different amendments, and then you vote back on the final. So just separate motions sometimes works better. But either way, I would like to...
Write these down. Go ahead.
Change the, where is it? The winter, we're looking at the winter dockage, winter...
Dinghy?
Winter dinghy. Where, winter dinghy permit. Yes, I think, and I spoke with, with Steve today about this, and it doesn't seem to be a too radical idea that we could experiment with a $50 fee for the winter dinghy permit rather than the $100 fee.
Okay.
And... Can I ask, can you say why you want to do that? Because I don't, I'd like to know.
Trying to move toward more of a four-season harbor. But not, I mean, that's not totally reasonable. But I guess the idea is to try to maximize the use of the harbor as much as possible. And if, right now, it looks like there's a little bit of wiggle room for, there's more space than is being taken advantage of, there are people that might, you know, especially, we had an interesting talk about climate change today, because what used to be sort of unheard of in terms of being able to boat in the winter and enjoy, it's, it's actually becoming much more mild. And so, so there's that. And then I do think that, I'd like to put on the table at least adding a day sailor parking fee.
At what price?
$500.
$500.
We are, keeping in mind that we will be eliminating their, we just eliminated their application fee, so they're saving $100 on that.
True.
Some of them may be able to not use a parking spot.
Maybe.
Maybe two of them want to share a parking spot.
Maybe.
But that is extremely valuable real estate down there. And reserving that number of parking spots for the day sailors comes at a cost to the town. We don't have kayak racks down there. We don't have a place for people to put their paddle boards. There are many people kept from using the harbor. We could make better use of the parking spots. So I, I would add that fee. They could, they could opt in or they could opt out of it.
And that's $500 for the season, for the summer season?
Yes, that's what I would...
Okay. All right, go ahead. Keep, any else?
Uh, there, I feel, one resident brought it to my attention, that we don't have different fees for resident versus non-resident fishermen, where it's been our, our practice mostly to try and provide a benefit to Camden residents for town services. So where fishermen floats?
It's five, supposed to be 500. But what does it say?
So I would propose that we do not increase the fee for residents.
I'm looking at fishermen's float and parking at two numbers.
Over 1st through May 1st?
Yeah. What's the two numbers for?
Oh, right, there's the winter.
Summer, one's the winter.
Yeah.
The two fees combined are the annual fee.
Oh, God.
Oh, no, yeah, that's a good point. I don't want to increase the fishermen float fees for the winter.
It's up to you. Those are the, you know, the urgent fishermen.
It just doesn't seem like, do you, do we have a base problem in the winter for that? Any reason?
No.
Other than to...
Right now, we don't.
I think generally, we would want more use of the harbor in the winter.
Yeah, they've been definitely using the hoist a lot, the urgent fishermen.
Okay. So what are we proposing for numbers here? Were you talking about fishermen's float and parking for resident and fishing, fishermen's float and parking for non-resident? Is that what I'm hearing?
So there are two, let's, I guess there are two things. I would, I would propose not to increase the fees for the October 1st through May 1st category of fishermen at all.
And splitting the other one?
And the other one, I, yes, I think we should split so that there's some benefit for residents. Where is the...
Well, you said you were gonna...
Keep it...
Keep it 400 for a resident, but make it 500 for a non-resident.
That's, yeah.
Where's the summer fishermen?
Right above it.
Right above it. Fishermen's float and parking, that's...
Oh, oh, oh.
Question about that, Steve. That'll create another, is that going to be difficult for the harbor clerk to differentiate between residents and non-residents, or is that pretty simple?
It's pretty simple.
How, what's, how many local, how many non-resident people are there?
I believe we have two non-resident.
Out of how many?
Six.
Out of, well, six active, but there's other permit, other permit holders.
All right. So I see, I'm hearing three changes there. One would be the October to May, that there would be no increase in maintaining 150, and that the fishermen's float and parking would be split to $400 for Camden, staying at $400 for Camden, and non-residents would be 500. That's what I'm hearing. Comments?
Is there more?
Unless somebody more knowledgeable than I...
Are you, is there more that you have?
I don't think so.
Mark?
I'd like to hear what this gentleman has to say about the fees.
I'm sure you do.
No, I do.
We do.
That's why you're here. That's...
Line up.
Avery Brott, Camden, Maine. I, I know most of you. I work with some of you, and I wholly disagree with most of you regarding the harbor fees. Mark, I love what you said about the, the administration fee. When you were considering waiving the application fee, why charge to keep someone's name on a list? My son was on the waiting list for an inner harbor float for 15 years. It's $625 just to roll his name over every year. That should come with a town. That's what taxes are for, I believe. It's not why I'm here to talk, though. It seems to me, I grew up in Camden Harbor, on Camden Harbor, around Camden Harbor. I've lived here for 45 years on Bayview Street, on the landing. I've had a boat of some sort every year of my life down there. And it seems, since I finally acquired a float, a slip, 20 something years ago, the fees were manageable at that point. I was a young kid, and it was, I think, 250, 300 bucks. And since then, the prices, the rate has gone up every year, just more in the last 10 years than before, but it's, it's just started going up and up and up. It's like, why? What, there is no value added. The only improvement we've ever seen in the time that I've had a boat down there are new floats about five years ago, which are actually smaller and tippier. And I wrote you all a letter two weeks ago, or three weeks ago, I was on my ship, I'm a merchant mariner. And I think, Bob, you read the letter, so you've probably all heard this, and everybody out on YouTube land, hi. But my complaint, or my protest, is the fact that this is not a marina. This is a place to tie up my boat. There's a small platform. There are two cleats. There is no parking. There's no security. There's no electricity. There's no lighting. There's not even a water hose. This is bare bones. There is no hose. Not a hose. I talked to Steve about getting a comp about the main coast or comparable areas in New England. He said, well, I've looked at Nantucket, I've looked at Topson, I've looked at Belfast. But he didn't look at anything municipal. He looked at private slips. No municipalities. This is a partly tax-funded operation. And if that's how it's going to be run, as a town-funded or town-offered asset, then if you're going to raise my rates for another, another $50 this year, I just want to know, why? Is it a profit center?
Yes, it is. It is.
Then why is the pump-out boat free?
Because it's funded by the state to 90%, so it has to be free.
Okay. So getting back to why my rates are going up, why are my rates going up $50 a year?
I mean, the reason...
With all due respect, and I'll take my, my answer offline, I've been here for two hours and plus waiting because I missed the general comment. And this is all with, with friendly, neighborly due respect. I'm tired, I'm going to go home. But please, and I, I know that I'm speaking for a bunch of people on the camera right there who couldn't be here tonight. We're all wholly in opposition of just the state ramping up. And please keep us in mind. Don't, don't price the locals out.
Thank you, Avery. Thanks for coming. Hope you feel better.
Thanks.
So, I mean, I, I did spend some time looking at the waiting list. So the reason that I have supported, I can only speak for myself, the reason I have supported increases in that area is because we have a roughly 12-year waiting list for the finger floats. So when I look at the waiting list and who makes up the waiting list, it's also almost completely local people, Camden residents on the waiting list. And it's, the, the problem is the demand is just very, very high. And trying to figure out what's the fairest way to distribute this asset that not everybody can have access to. I totally sympathize with the idea of the concern with pricing people out of Camden. It's happening with housing. It's happening in many businesses. It's hard to find a place to rent, to run a business downtown. It's hard to, it's becoming a place where only really wealthy people can afford to be. So I am concerned about those things, with things that we have so few of, and things like the harbor that are a revenue source. I would never want to make it impossible for everybody to get a mooring, but there's no way that we can make inner, like, finger floats accessible to everybody. And so to me, it seems like the fairest thing to do would be to make that more of a market-driven thing. Still keeping a huge difference between the resident fee and the non-resident fee, but that seems like the only fair way to distribute those resources to me.
Mark, did you want to say something before?
I do, yes.
Just get the input before Taylor, if it's okay.
And this is in response to Avery. And I, if you look at this, when, when we went through these harbor fees, we were very protective of residents. And we did not raise any of the fees for moorings. We did not raise any of the dinghy fees. We did not raise any of the residential fees, Camden resident fees. So other than, yes, the, the finger float, and the only justification we had for raising the finger float $50 is because we have a standard practice of charging twice for a non-resident than we do a resident. So it, just looking at the numbers, we charged 1,500 for a non-resident. So that's how we came up with the 750. And it wasn't to just randomly raise fees.
So is that already a stop? Does it begin to level out?
I think, somebody asked me that question earlier, and that question you sent me, you can hear it, was, will this continue to continue to continue? You know, once you, I, in my opinion, this is kind of my opinion, once you get to a place where we feel, and we do, that this is comparable, as it were, then, you know, you really should only be looking at nominal cost of living type increases as you go forward, which is, you know, a few percent. So I can't guarantee that, but that's, that's the philosophy we take into other fee schedules in town for various other elements, and we'll be discussing later. But no, I don't anticipate, I don't see it going up dramatically every year. I think we, we've gone a long way to adjust over the last couple of years, a lot of harbor fee stuff, to get it, and not, you know, the cruise ships have gone up fourfold in, in two years. You know, so if you, if you want to, that, that was, the reason for that was the market. The same thing has to apply here, Avery. I think we'll keep that in mind as we go forward.
The other thing I'd like to point out, I mean, in comparing these fees to Rockland, we are much higher. For example...
It's hard to compare those.
Yeah.
They are, they're complicated, yes. One, dinghy fees. Rockland dinghy fees are $50 for the season, where our dinghy fees are... 125 and 250 for non-residents. So they're considerably higher.
I mean, it has to be, to me, it makes no sense to just compare to the other places. It has to be driven by what, how much access there is. What do we have? What is the, the, we don't have room for that many more dinghys. We don't have...
This is steady march, just of the...
Taylor first.
Depends on the length of the waitlist.
And that's my concern also.
All right. Taylor, you got a comment?
Yeah, I was, to go back to what, Allison summarized it, I think, really well. In that this is not, that, I don't think there is a... In that this is not, I don't think there is a great comparable for, for apples-to-apples, looking at exactly what we have to other places. I was at some of the harbor committee meetings where this has, had been discussed, all this has been discussed ad nauseam within the harbor committee before it came here, if that isn't clear to anybody. But some of the floats, and slips, and services, and benefits that we have in Camden Harbor, they simply don't exist other places the way they exist in Camden Harbor, so it's really impossible to have a, an apples-to-apples comparison. But I also think that the reality is, it is a limited resource. I, I am on the same page with you 100% Avery, in terms of pricing out the local. I'm a working-class individual, it matters to me that Camden is a place that's affordable for working-class people across the board in everything that we do. The question for us, and I don't think it's a perfect answer to this, is, what's the fairest way to look at, how do you, how do you settle on what the appropriate price is? I think market value, in a lot of ways, is the best way to do that, and I think we could all agree, there is substantial demand right now for all of these resources out there, in particular, finger floats. Floats in general. Just one second. On the question of, does this keep marching up and up, I was having this conversation today, earlier, and that was someone before this meeting, and my personal thought is that this in front of us, and based on what the harbor committee's been working on, gets us to a place where I feel like we've plateaued, and that there really isn't a reason to further increase these in future years, with the exception of looking at normal cost-of-living increases, increasing with inflation, that type of thing. And that's my feeling. Obviously, we can't control future select boards, but if I'm in this chair again next year and the year after, I don't see us doing this every year where we're seeing notable increases on these fees, just for the sake of increasing them.
Let me ask a question. Once you get your finger float, you have it for life, basically, unless you let it go. What if there was some sort of lottery program after a certain amount of years, so there was more changeovers, so people had more opportunity?
You're trying to push somebody off of their finger float?
I understand.
I'm going to duck under the desk.
They waited 25 years to get on.
Just say, thank you, Mark, but no.
Good night.
Bringing it up.
So to where we are, then...
A draft.
There've been two or three things thrown on the table, Allison threw one, in terms of changes, but I've heard nothing else about any other change from anybody else. Mark?
I do have. I understand putting in a fee for parking for the day sailors. I'm very uncomfortable having it slipped in this meeting where they're not represented, where it was, because we didn't discuss it the last meeting where we decayed everything, and all of a sudden to throw it in when they don't have any, we don't have a chance to discuss it with them, I am uncomfortable about that.
Well, you think they won't like it?
Just since we're talking about the item, I, in a similar way, I agree with Mark. I certainly think that, you know, I think there's no question, but parking spaces are valuable, an asset, and they're, they're limited. My, my view on it is, I don't think that it's appropriate to single out one specific group, you know, because then why aren't we charging the fishermen additional for parking? I feel like, from a town standpoint, that our policy should be that we're approaching, particularly the Town Landing parking situation as a whole, I think we've already started looking at that. I just don't feel comfortable doing it, piecemealing it in this way, that's all.
Would you be comfortable if the number was lower?
How about just $100, the exact amount that we took from their application?
Philosophically, it just doesn't make sense to me to be piecemealing the parking permits. I think we're opening a can of worms, because then, like, what happens when a restaurant number, then, because once you separate it, right now it's part of, it's included in the day sailor fee. So as soon as we take it out of the day sailor fee, this is just in my opinion, and make it a separate thing, then we're, we're selling parking permits now. It's a parking permit. So then why can't the owner of XYZ restaurant come by and say, hey, I want a parking permit for the Town Landing? Well, you can't have one, why can't you have one? Because we decided at that meeting that we were going to do it for the day sailors.
We're only going to give them away for free, we refuse to sell them.
I just don't like the precedent that it sets us up for.
It's also, we're, we're all of a sudden giving them a $500 fee increase that they don't have a chance to discuss. I just don't think it's fair. I mean, we can discuss it, as Taylor's saying, about how to handle everything in the, but I, I think to throw it in like this is, I'm uncomfortable with that, and I would have to vote against it.
All right, well, we won't consider, because there's only four of us, we know it's going to happen. And I suggest we at least move forward with approving...
What about the pump-out, is there a pump-out, a commercial pump-out fee?
A commercial pump-out fee?
Wasn't there supposed to be, or didn't? Because it's, you know, the...
There was never a commercial pump-out fee, was there?
We discussed...
Yes, we did.
Adding that for the day sailors.
We discussed it at the last meeting, but there wasn't, you didn't assign a price.
What do you recommend?
Doesn't the boat have to be free?
Not for commercial.
No, no, it's for, it's not for commercial.
Talking about assigning a fee when it's used for a commercial vessel.
Steve, what amount?
You could charge $20 for a pump-out, if it's going to be over 50 gallons. That's what other commercial fees are.
All right. Now, a commercial will cover whom? When you say "commercial," what are we referring to?
A vessel that, that makes substantial money.
Fisherman, day sailor, windjammer?
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, or maybe it should be passenger vessels, because that's really...
All right, and for the sake of sanity, in a sense, maybe we would look, the hearing is changing the dinghy winter permit to 50, changing the fisherman fees October to May is zero, the fisherman from Camden, 400, fisherman from, non-resident, 500, and a commercial rate for $20 for pump-out.
Hold on, October to May, zero, or just zero increase?
Hold on a second.
Zero increase, I don't know if...
I wrote down the wrong else, thank you, no, zero increase.
$400 stays at 400.
Okay.
Oh, right, it's, it's all, here we go.
Yes.
So for the, for the commercial pump-out, is that just for passenger, or is it also for fishermen?
I mean, maybe we just need to put, say, day sailor and windjammer.
Yep.
Yeah, there's a base, day sailor, windjammer.
Things we have to find in our organs.
Does somebody want to make that motion, or do you want me to do it?
So...
Amending the motion?
Yeah, so why don't I, I'll amend my motion.
Okay.
That we approve the Town of Camden 2020 harbor fees, harbor fees, with the harbor committee recommendations, with the following changes.
Dinghy winter permit, $50. The fishermen, October to May, zero increase. The fishermen fees for Camden resident fishermen, 400. The fishermen fees for non-resident, 500, and to add a day sailor, windjammer, pump-out for $20.
Back to the motion.
Do I get a second?
Second.
That's all right, more discussion, all those in favor, 4-0. Thank you very much, gang, thank you very, very much.
Good job.
Thanks for all your hard work, Mark. I know it's not easy.
Yeah.
To, to Parks and Rec, which was next, it was mentioned to Odder, a recommendation that the board can go with or not, and that is basically to discuss Parks and Rec rates at this meeting, whatever we have in here, excluding the snowball. And look at the snowball thing as we get a little bit more data on the year, toward making a decision there on the first part of February, is that what I kind of said? And I was concerned about budgeting cycle, but I think it's a suggested wise move. But again, this is a decision that the board has to make, not me.
I'm comfortable with that.
There are a couple of, just general things that I would want to comment on, because I'm not sure if they apply to this...
This fiscal year.
Year as well, or...
This, I'm only addressing the 21 rates only.
Right, but just to, you know, making sure that it's very clear, I'm not seeing, you know, the free Wednesdays.
Correct.
That should still be in effect, like, just little things like that, so...
Okay, okay, no, we can discuss those.
Okay for waiting on the whole...
Price increases.
That would be part of the discussion in February.
We'll hold until the first issue, February 3rd, 4th, whatever it is, a discussion for those to support the budget cycle. But there are issues to discuss in general, is this whole thing only snowball right now?
Well, the top...
The top has Parks and Rec.
That's why, that's what I missed.
Parks and Rec revenue at the top of it.
What did I miss? Why can't I find it? Oh, I see, I see, there's a field use, new, field use, new, summer camp, and then that's it.
Yep, and those, I'm not, for the summer camp, we're not changing the rates.
Got it, but you are adding $100 for this youth league, $100 per team?
Per team.
$300 for adult team?
Not team, I'm sorry, per league.
League, league, league.
Per year.
Thank you for that clarification, it's very important.
Yes.
I get it, okay.
We had that discussion last time.
So those two rates, and then no change, so the only two that are being recommended by the manager are those two new rates.
I think it needs to be written just slightly more clearly, so that people could read it, and know that it's not just, like, okay, if you want to have one game there, or if you want to...
It's, it's a reservation fee, so every year, football comes to us.
Right, but just so that people reading it, that don't...
A whole thing that they...
Word "league" in there, just get the word "league."
No, "league" is in there, but per league, per year.
Per year, okay.
Per year, we're just, just...
Do I have a motion for those two?
So that'd be like, so field use reservation fee for adults, that'd be like adult softball, that they would pay, now would pay a fee. One person I know will be very happy about this.
I think a couple.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, I'm good.
Motion.
And we, and just so you know, we met with each of these leagues, and they are all fine with this.
Yep, I understand, it's very common.
I make a motion that we, I make a motion that we authorize the changes with the wording change for the...
Field use.
Revenue, revenue for field use reservations.
Okay.
Second.
Discussion, I was going to say comments, I'm getting buzzy.
And instruct that one resident to pay the remainder of his tax bill.
Yes. Go in there. All those in favor, 4-0, thank you, Beth. But to a point, I think it is important, that I've had feedback on too, is where we stand today, not related to rates, to free Wednesdays.
So I was coming to the board tonight to ask if you wanted me to continue that discount for Camden residents.
Sounded like it was successful in some ways last year, yeah?
It was. We had about 108 residents come out.
For a limited time.
For the, when we started, when did we start it?
February.
Yeah.
We voted on it sometime in January, and then we started.
All underway.
And people were very appreciative.
There are two things, there was a Wednesday free, and then there was a two-hour fee, correct?
Yep, so this year, there is a Camden-only two-hour, $16 ticket, Wednesday through Friday. But if Wednesdays are free, it's really just going to be Tuesday, or Thursday and Friday.
I get it. So are you, are you currently running Tuesday and Thursday for $2, for two hour, is that currently on the books?
Not during vacation week.
Okay.
Because those are considered holiday...
So you don't need a clarification on that one, but you need clarification on the Wednesdays.
On the free Wednesdays, starting tomorrow.
I make a motion that we authorize free Wednesdays for Camden residents.
Second.
Discussion.
I would just add a comment that I feel like it should have remained in effect, instead of, it should be printed, and, because a few people have come to me just really disappointed, and, so I guess my thought was, and I have told them, no, no, that's still in effect, and then they said they've gone and asked at the snowball, and they were told that it, you know, they didn't know yet, and maybe it's just a communication issue, which I know we aren't the best with, either, but...
We should have nipped it in the bud, but...
We can't fix the past, but let's fix it right now.
So if we could print it on...
Website.
I don't know, wherever, for as long as, I mean, is this something that I should be asking the board every year?
Well, I mean, as I recall, this should, wasn't this...
It should be a fee, just like with everything else.
Yeah, I think it should be on your rate schedule.
Oh, okay.
And put it on this one.
Until such time as it's changed.
And then if we want to remove it...
Well, for me, last year was last year's.
I get it, I get it, I get it. So I think you should have a rate schedule, as free Wednesdays, including this 21, and we should insert it in any publicity we have today, as part of this motion, which we haven't voted on yet, but we will, to make sure everybody understands that Wednesdays for Camden residents are, in fact, free.
Yes, and that would be part of this, so it would be like, until it's changed, just like any of these other fees are the same, until they're...
Nothing changes unless we change it in the future, or tails replacement changes it. All those in favor, 4-0, thanks so much.
Yeah, there is a Windjammer Fest piece, I don't know if you need to...
Hold on, can we still talk about a snowball this year relevant thing?
Absolutely, but, I mean, get the best...
It's at the way bottom of that sheet.
Just get the best question, I might get this rate schedule behind this.
I don't know if you need to see that, it's a, it's a special account.
Uh, Windjammer Fest.
Yeah.
No change?
No change.
Vendor fee, t-shirts, ball camps, I don't have any comment on that. And does anybody...
Is there, yeah, is there an issue with it?
No, no, I just didn't know if that, because it's not snowball.
It's amazing to me that, isn't that like a fundraiser kind of thing, that the fact that we set the prices for t-shirts at Windjammer Weekend?
Well, we sell them to make a little bit of profit off of them.
But I feel like, that's like a special, that kind of thing would be more like you guys could...
Do you want to delegate it to the committee?
I'd rather delegate it to the committee, like, you guys are going to see what happens with, I mean...
What we get for merchandise, and what we...
Market?
That's a level of management that we...
Delegate the committee.
Okay, because there's also merchandise in Tobago Nationals and in Snowball.
Same thing, same thing.
Agreed.
Yeah, you should have placed in merchandise.
You have another comment about current operations?
Yeah, I guess, is it maybe in like the hidden fee category, or, I don't know if it's on here or not.
Which is what?
The, the, okay, is there a fee? So what's the rule about, is it under six skis free, or six and under?
Under six.
Under six.
It's always been that way.
Yep. Right, right, I'm not...
Since Ethan was, yeah.
Yes, but, so what if a, okay, so for, do they have to cut, my, if you want a season pass for your child that is, will remain five for the entire season, I've heard mixed things about what that process is.
So several years ago, it got changed to if you were getting a season's pass for your youth, you had to pay, I think it's 50 if you're at Camden, I think it's on there, and...
Season pass for under six?
Yep, and 75 for non-residents.
It used to be free, and then it turned to 50.
So, the reason why that was changed, it was not my, me that changed it, but when it was changed...
No, that's not you.
It was for the fact that people were coming in out of the woodwork and getting their three, four, five-year-old season's passes, and we didn't know if they were skiing with an adult. So we changed it, that with a paying adult, you can get a free ticket at the ticket desk for your youth. Then we were assured that they were skiing with someone.
I don't, so, Bob, I...
Okay, sorry.
So you're understanding youth is not the same as under six?
Yeah. Well, I don't, I don't have that, I don't have a sheet in front, but there is, so if you, if Mark's family bought a family season's pass, and he had a five-year-old, that five-year-old is included and gets it, because he's, he, there's a family.
Family, right.
I think the issue that you're speaking of is if mom or dad gets a pass and Joey's four, should Joey get a pass, because mom has a season's pass.
Yes, because people are having to go in, and they're waiting in line, and they've bought a season pass for themselves, or in some cases, it's like a couple members of their family, and then they've got a five-year-old, and then it even, they're going in, have to go through this process every time, and it's even, like, then other people that are going to purchase tickets have to wait for those people. The issue of whether or not people are leaving their five-year-olds unattended on the mountain, I'd rather deal with that separately than try to do it in, in the way of making them get a, you can still leave them after you give them a ticket.
I have a question, how much of a problem has it been, having five-year-olds skiing by themselves?
It happens on occasion, but, you know, we have mountain stewards that help out and things like that. It was, it was an assurance that they were coming and skiing with someone. Uh, it happens on occasion, but, you know, we have mountain stewards that help out and things like that, it's, it was, it was an assurance that they were coming and skiing with someone.
But if you have a season.
Exactly.
If you have, if you're five, if you have a family pass, and you can leave your five-year-old.
I think I have a way of making this easier on those folks that are having the issue of standing in line for a ticket, free ticket. If a parent has a season's pass and they have a child under six, next year we'll take their photos and they can have a season's pass with their parent.
That's a good idea, that's what I was thinking.
As long as there's a parent with a, with a season's pass.
I don't see why, you should have to have, we don't have any mechanism of making sure that, so if you have a family pass and you have a five-year-old, and you get, so because you have the family pass, your five-year-old gets a season pass too, we don't have a mechanism of preventing that family from leaving their five-year-old alone.
Well, the assurance is that somebody's accountable for that child, whether they're skiing or not, that is the parent's choice. It's the parent's choice if a five-year-old gets on the lift by themselves, it's a parent's choice.
I agree.
Right, so if a family that doesn't have that much money and doesn't ski themselves, but their five-year-old is gonna ski, and they're gonna, that parent is gonna stand down at the, sign up for a lesson or whatever, and stand there at the bottom of the magic carpet and let their kid go up and down, that should be a parent's choice, and that parent shouldn't have to every time buy a.
If they're standing on snow, they need a ticket, or a pass.
On snow?
Well, if they're over there helping, doing anything, it's their, it's their waiver, basically. Well, you can, you can be standing there, but it's the ones that are hiking up, because what if they get hit by a snow, you know, a snowboarder, there's liability there.
I can see saying not to let them on the.
There's liability, if you, you and I should have a separate discussion, because there's liability of having anyone on the magic carpet.
It's, it's really expensive to have to buy, if you want your kids to ski, just to say that I have to buy a lift ticket too, and then just to be able to sit at the bottom of the magic carpet and watch my five-year-old go up and down.
I can bring up specifics, my wife and I don't ski, when my son was five, he got a free pass, and we took him there, but we had friends that skied, and so we made sure that he went with adult, the adult parents of his friends, that he could ski with them. Now, in that situation, you know, he's not gonna be able to get a, he wouldn't have gotten a free pass, because I wasn't buying a ticket, but our parent there, I, I think that worked fine. I, I can't, we can't, I don't think we can legis.
Sounds like you're agreeing with me.
I don't think, yeah, I am, I don't think, I don't think we can sit here and try and legislate how parents take care of their kids, I don't think that's fair.
Can't do that, no, I agree.
I think they should, still, kids should be five or under until they age, they should be free, and they should get a pass.
I feel like we already found, I think we found a solution for this in this conversation.
I don't think that was a solution, because it was still the parent having to go in to verify that they were buying a ticket too, for their, there are non-skiing parents, I, I just think there are any number of liabilities with having kids there.
Select board, make a recommendation.
I, I make a motion that we return to allowing children under the age of six get a free season pass with their picture, simple as that. And then, you know, and we, like you said, we have stewards on the mountain, and if they find that there's five-year-olds going.
Do I have a second?
I, yeah, and I would say the snowball should reserve the right to, there are very problematic kids that are over five too. Mason, and over by the magic carpet, got hit by, with an ice ball from a child that wasn't being well-supervised by their parent, so that's not.
That's a different issue.
Right, so it's, there are all kinds of issues with kids and leaving them, but I was.
Do we have a second on the motion?
Yeah, a second so we can discuss it, is that, isn't that what you were suggesting?
That's what we used to do.
They're now saying that there doesn't need to be a parent that's buying a ticket, or has a season pass.
That's what the motion is.
Right, during the day, but somebody, but certainly a parent would have to be involved in the decision to get them the season pass at the beginning of the season.
Yes.
Soon.
Right, we, we still rely on parents to be responsible and reserve the right to tell anybody that they need to leave.
Not fair for us to legislate.
You can have the parents whose, whose child.
They have to have a skiing parent.
They can sign up the liability statement to the town, saying that I recognize that my, you know.
They will have to do that.
They, they should do that, then that, that gives you some limited protection.
And I can't give you specific numbers, but before this change, there were hundreds of under-six-year-old season passes that we had coming through the office and filling out the forms and taking their pictures.
But not hundreds of unattended five-year-olds, like.
Ah, I would, I would disagree with you.
But people are leaving their, the decision to leave a five-year-old unattended isn't, doesn't come down to whether a parent's a skier or a non-skier, comes down to being a responsible parent.
Right.
I was frustrated that Benny let Mason ride the chair a little bit.
And I have to, and I have to say, having the ability for him to start skiing at that age has cost me a fortune, because I just had to buy him new skis and new pass.
It ain't cheap.
And new boots this year, but it's because he had that opportunity as, as a young child to try it and fall in love with it, and that's important.
We have a motion.
So this will come into effect next December?
That's correct.
Yeah.
That's what we're talking about, twenty, twenty, twenty twenty-one.
So what's, what is frustrating though to me is that it feels like this is a hidden fee, because I don't see it, and so it's, we only find out about these fees because somebody experiences them, and then it's not a fee that I can see on.
It's written on all of our materials, it's on the website, it's in our brochure, it says, free with a paying adult.
I know, but it's.
And you can get a slipway ticket as an adult for six dollars, I believe, during the week.
We have a motion on table for twenty twenty-one and seconded to, to allow under-five-year-olds with parents signing the liability statement for twenty twenty-one.
I mean, if, if, since it's, if it's not gonna happen until next year anyway, I don't want to, I recognize that I'm not an expert on everything, and I don't want to just get here and undermine everything that you've spent a long time formulating, I, if we could send the, I mean, if we could vote on, if there's a, if you want to go back and think about whether there's a, what better way to solve the problem, or you want to present more information to us or something, or, I do really respect your, you know, the snowball stuff and what goes into the decisions that you make.
Thank you, I, I think for this year, I can make the exception that I just spoke about, that if an adult of that child has a season's pass, that child can get a season's pass this year without having to deal with the ticket area.
What do you want to vote next year?
And now, next year, I, I'm, I'm fine going back to this, and we can see how many come through.
All right, then we'll vote on that motion.
Yeah.
Ours in favor? Four zero, thank you Beth.
Thank you, Beth.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Gray, for hanging in there, I'm gonna move now to the Opera House, which I couldn't find in my.
Well, I could only find the two thousand eighteen, once again.
Typo there, wasn't it? Oh, there it is, I got it, I got it.
These are the same comments we made before.
Yes, it is.
It still has Carrie's, I mean, it still has Carrie's contact information on there.
And I think that that was.
We made that same comment like a month ago.
What should we do?
Table it until next time, I'm, I'm too grumpy to talk about the Opera House.
The only, nothing is gonna change in terms of the actual fees, the only thing that's gonna change are the logo, the names, and the date.
Let's table this issue to a future meeting.
Okay.
And then we will.
Run with that.
I need to understand, are we supposed to have a.
Run with this because.
Opera House accounting briefing, so that we can understand.
Yes, we, we need to do that.
Let's do that in conjunction.
I would agree with you, and that's a good idea, a good summary for, for complete disclosure. We will then, what, what the heck is this? The same thing with the Camden area schools, this got, well, I'll delay that, I'm gonna move the follow-up discussion on the meeting with Ragged Mountain Foundation to the next item.
I forgot about the Micro Solid Waste Project.
I'm gonna do that last, yeah, in case there's anybody here that wants to talk about number ten.
Yes, that's.
Basically, a follow-up discussion on the meeting with Ragged Mountain Foundation, our aid of fundraising, the Snowball Lodge, which you brought to our attention is, seems to need more clarification, which I thought we made quite well during the workshop, but we can do it here.
Oh.
Fine.
I think we need to talk about it as a, it's not like anything concrete came out of the.
No, we didn't make any decision in the workshop.
I, I don't even know what decision we would have made, what decisions were on the table to make, it was more of a briefing.
I'd say that this is what the, the foundation is looking for, some sort of go-ahead to start fundraising again from the select board. Support, yeah, just support to move forward with fundraising for the lodge.
Oh.
That's what we did.
That's what they're looking for, and so I, I just wanted to.
Pressuring Adra to make, for us to make that decision.
Yeah, I thought they wanted us to put it out to voters to ask for more money from taxpayers.
No.
No.
So it was fundraising for, whatever the fundraising for.
I got a phone call, I don't know, but.
Well, okay, I will say this.
That was not clear at all.
I will, I will say that there is one, one member of the foundation who very much is interested in keeping that door open, but I don't know if that's the sentiment of the entire board.
Yeah.
Do you just want to start fundraising again?
Which, which door?
Well, I wish.
The fundraising door versus the bond door.
I feel like I wish I had said different, some, they're just asking for, well, okay, that's interesting, it would be nice, I would like to hear that from them, because that's not what I heard from, I mean, who's, who speaks on behalf of the foundation?
Uh, nobody's here.
Yeah, that's the.
And I think we should table.
We need to have something, so I personally would like a lot more, more feedback from residents, and I believe that could happen quickly. My, my feeling from that meeting was that they were saying, you know, the price tag was gonna be anywhere between from four point five to six million dollars.
And what you include in funding.
Right, and that, I don't know how much has already been fundraised.
Million.
But, I mean, if they think they can fundraise that, then that's, that's wonderful, we do need to look at what the added cost to the town would be, but, and the timeline, because what I've heard from a lot of residents is concern and frustration that they thought they were getting a lot, a lot of us just don't really love, don't want to spend that much time on the mountain skiing, but want to be able to sit in a place that has some space, and so there are some people in the community, I think, that would like us to really move forward on a maybe less expensive solution fast, but I didn't, I really felt strongly that they were asking us to put money, put it out to, that's what.
No, 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 no.
I guess it was the, the strongly word, the phone call that I got beforehand.
I was at the meeting, I'm not on the foundation, Chris O'Ro, Camden, my sense of that meeting was they were looking for a commitment, is the town ready to start going forward with building the lodge, in which case they are ready to start fundraising.
Fundraising, absolutely.
But they're not going to start fundraising if there isn't a commitment from the town.
You are a hundred percent right.
That's, that's what they're looking for.
You are a hundred percent right, and that's.
Saying we need a bond, we're not, they're just saying like, are we going forward?
You are correct, very succinct, thank you.
My feeling, just to go back to the big, like the, it seemed almost too simple to answer, Adra, that, do we have support from the board to start fundraising? The simple answer from my perspective is, yes, of course, I love the idea of having a new lodge out there at no expense to the taxpayer, but there are a million questions that come with that, so from a general sense, yeah, I'm supportive of you fundraising, but it feels a little weird to just say, yeah, I support you fundraising, and then, you know, and like, yeah, I'm supportive, but I feel like we need to have more conversation before we just write it.
Mark, Mark.
I, I agree with Taylor, I think, there's no one in this town that doesn't want a new lodge, there's no one that doesn't want, if they want to fundraise, but I would like to see a plan, you know, Bob talked extensively about a lodge just doesn't, the expense doesn't just stop the day it's finished being built, and also they're the Ragged Mountain Foundation, they're not the Ragged Mountain Snow Skiing Foundation, and I would like to see a plan as we deal with climate change, goes into our discussion earlier, and if we have, if we have fewer ski days and that affects our skiing budget, do they have a plan to help transform the mountain into a four-season financial plan, or maybe they can help with fundraising for doing new trails, for biking and stuff like that. I need to see them, before I say, yes, let's move ahead, I need to see them looking at the whole mountain for the whole year and have a plan in place as a foundation for the whole mountain, not just for a couple-month ski season, and I didn't get that, I got, what I got from that meeting is they made some commitments to some of their fundraisers that they should do that, and that was what they were concerned about, and that was disappointing to me.
Allison, a comment?
Oh, well, gosh, I'm, I'm really confused because of, you know, I had a conversation with, with Bob Gordon before the meeting, and so that, I saw, I saw the meeting through that lens, of the town really needs to step up and ask, look at asking the voters for more money, this is what was said to me before, by the chair.
You're not wrong, you're not wrong to come away with that impression from having that conversation, but, but that's, yeah, that's not the sentiment of that entire board.
It's not.
I feel terrible, because the poor people are just doing so much work.
I know.
I must have come off like a just total jerk, and.
Nobody would think that of you.
No, I, I mean, a little bit, I would think, so anyway, I'm gonna read, so, yeah, I do think we need to talk to them about what the timeline is and what we could, you know, share with.
Yeah, and I agree, but to the question I believe is being asked about fundraising, to what Mark and Taylor said, read my lips, no bottom-line impact to the town to build or maintain that facility, if that facility is what they want to build, now, to your point, there are other options that need to be quickly considered, because I also agree that the snowball needs something out there, it's just that, obviously, disagreement in what that need is, and how it's gonna be paid for.
And, yeah, and I guess that's the other half of it, is they, they very much are committed to moving forward with that design that they presented, and they've sunk a lot of money into.
Three hundred thousand dollars.
So that's kind of the decision that you all need to make, is, are we, are you as committed to moving forward with that?
Again, from my perspective, it's yes, but they're gonna have to calculate what, how many million it is to, one, fund the construction, and two, fund enough extra additional money to have an annuity that will pay for its maintenance.
Yeah.
But again, I'm looking at it as a year-round situation, one of the, one of the things about the lodge that they designed is the roof is designed to insulate because of the snow load, if there is no snow, that kind of insulation doesn't work.
Yeah, I mean, I found a lot of that problematic too, but I, I also think that when it comes to fundraising, you have to, the people, it, it requires motivation of the people that are willing to do the work of fundraising, the people that are willing to give, and that you cannot suck the life out of that enthusiasm by coming back again, and I didn't participate heavily in those conversations back then, and so when you're talking about something that's gonna be a hundred percent, virtually a hundred percent privately fundraised.
Yep.
You mostly, I don't, I, I wouldn't be comfortable being too harsh or too, you know.
I don't want to be harsh on them, what I, what I want, but my responsibility is to the citizens of the town, not to the members of the Ragged Mountain Foundation.
Correct.
And that, there's a complete difference, because I don't see right now the plan that looks at the whole year, the whole situation, and maybe how climate change or whatever has changed what we can afford, the kind of design that the, the plan needs, as they say about poker games, once your money's in the game, it's not your money anymore, you know, yes, they, yes, yes, they spent the money on designing the lodge, but they didn't ask anybody.
No, they did though, they definitely did, I mean, we can look at the cost.
There were a lot of people coming in those conversations.
We can look at the cost of maintaining that building.
Yep.
And, and work, and, and try to collectively work that into the fundraising, but even if, you know, the snowball operation doesn't work out or something in the long run, and then you've just got, okay, we fundraised for a building that's sitting there, and then we have an endowment that pays for its maintenance, the, the risk to the taxpayers has been removed by that.
Yes, if we have that.
So we should have a talk with them about what, what we think the, you know, long-term maintenance should, some, some littler things, but not, it was clear to me that there wasn't a lot of appetite there for starting over in, in terms of.
No, that's true.
Design, and I think that's understandable, they've been working at this for a long time, and.
And they've sunk three hundred thousand dollars into the design.
And, and to say, okay, well, we're, our interest is that, you know, the community and not the Ragged Mountain Foundation, those two things are really intertwined, I mean, this community depends on the generosity of people that are willing to give, and the people that are willing to do the fundraising, and if we aren't good partners with the people that are willing to do the really heavy lifting and heavy spending, then the whole community suffers, so.
This is true.
But we have a fiduciary responsibility to them, as Mark suggested, and I think, again, it comes down to the question about fundraising, and to me, it's simple, if they want to do fundraising for that project, great, but it's gonna be enough to make it as net zero to the town. the town cost going forward. And I also agree, though, future planning, Mark, I agree with your point, we gotta, you can't one mouth say, the planet's warming up like crazy, we live in coastal Maine, and we're gonna reinforce a, a snow facility. There has to be more to it than that, and that's part of the discussion that has to occur here, because you can't talk out of both sides of your mouth.
I do think the potential for the mountain to be a four-season force is very strong, you know? It's just, it's, but it has to be a four-season situation. It can't be just, the planning can't be just about the snow.
I know out there are all four seasons, lots, there's quite a bit of activity. I, I've seen a steady increase in amount of activity out there in different seasons.
I know, but the income is, is-
The airlift rides are doing awesome.
They are, they are, and that's great job, but I think that fundamentally, I think that's, my hearing, that the answer to the fundraising question is, yeah, but no cost to bottom line to the town?
We should have another meeting with them.
We can do that too.
Yeah.
A little more consent.
Why are we discussing this tonight?
What's up?
We, we wanted to have another meeting with them, we shouldn't even broaden the agenda. I thought that's what Bob Gordon wanted.
Well, this is, this was helpful to me to have a better understanding. I learned a lot tonight.
I'm not interested in a workshop, I'm interested in having somebody from them represented here in a meeting so we can make decisions.
Okay.
Because if we can't make decisions in a workshop, we can in a select board meeting.
That's correct.
But I'd like them to be represented.
Oh, definitely, with, yeah.
All right, so let's, let's table the item until we can affect the same. Lastly-
The public could maybe ask some questions too, just as a-
Of course, of course, of course, thank you guys.
Thank you.
Last item, midco-solid waste budget timeline update. Ms. Finance Chair Committee, Lee Person, make it brief. No, I'm just kidding.
No, no.
Take your time. If you want to discuss, you don't have to.
Well, oh, actually, I think this is the official notice that we will not be on time. Had we been on time with the budget for, you know, the assessment, the Camden bill for midco-solid waste-
Right.
That would have already been received, should have been received by the-
December 31st.
Yes, as per the inter-local agreement, but due to a variety of issues, mostly not, we have a new manager, the budget is taking longer, and, you know, don't, it's gonna possibly call, midco-solid waste will not cost less next year, so we should budget for, you know, something reasonable, but in the next month or so, we're doing our best.
When we have, when we have a vote on the 29th, on the next directors' meeting, you don't think so?
I don't want to make any promises.
Got it.
But I think that Adra's well aware and, so, I mean, the reason that we need that is for our budget process, but-
Well, I get that, but the budget process allows for, as we go through budget committee meetings, if we have an element called midco-solid waste, we could defer that to the end.
Let's just be honest, we don't really need that number until-
That's what I thought, that's what I thought.
April, May.
End of March.
Oh.
End of March.
No, no, that's-
During budget committee.
I'm not willing to, that is extreme.
I mean, it is not ideal, it is not ideal whatsoever.
It should at least be in the packets, the binders and the, but-
I mean, it would be nice if the budget committee, when they're doing their March deliberations,